The work session this evening with a number of interviews for the Housing Authority Board. I'm not sure if all our applicants are here, in fact, I'm pretty sure they aren't. But we can begin with folks who are. I recognize Chris Little here. If you would like to be our first victim, please. Appreciate that.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. To those who I haven't really met, I've been in town for 30 years and during that time, I've sat on the Town Council for four years. I've been on the school committee, having been appointed by the council. I was on the board at the hospital for nine years and was the board chair. I was deeply involved in some, a lot of educational initiatives, like the South Kingstown Education Foundation for 18 years. I was very active in the land trust and am still an active supporter. And more recent years, I have become more involved in other activities which really bear pretty directly, as some of these earlier ones did, on the importance of the Housing Authority. Because I remember sitting in your position when I was a member of the council saying, "What are we going to do about the Housing Authority?" It's a problem in terms of trying to get the thing, the program, really to deliver the services that we are trying to have deliver. And it's been an ongoing issue and I've really not had, did not have time because of my practice, which was over 40 years as a lawyer. I recently retired from the active practice. My work was heavily in construction and also in really complicated contracting and permitting, such as that what the Housing Authority has done. But more recently, I've been involved in nonprofits like Neighborhood Health Plan for nine years and through also, through Tides Family Services, which reopened recently in town, which have given me a really good understanding of the interrelationship between housing, education, healthcare, and the overall success that our individual citizens can have. And so for many years, when I was, when I joined the council along, many, many years ago, at that point, we were concerned about being overwhelmed by subdivisions that were going to destroy the fabric of the town. And we were trying to stop it because we were trying to stop what made this a community. Well, obviously, for a lot of reasons, that threat is no longer present with us. But on the other hand, one of the pieces that's really very important to this town is trying to have an adequate supply of housing for those people who are needy and frankly, I think also for those who can't afford to buy in this town, as had been the case in the past. Now, the Housing Authority doesn't deal with the total equation, but it deals with one important part. And that is why I'm here and I'd like to use my background and experience, both as a lawyer for many years, my understanding of and appreciation for how this town operates as a government, in terms of its relationship between the council and the town manager and the staff, and also the federal agencies, to try to make us, put my energy into trying to get this issue of having the Housing Authority do the kind of job that we can all be proud of for our citizens, be something that we can look back and say, "That's something I've been able to do using my training and skills."
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Little?
I have no questions, other than you have a very impressive resume.
Thank you.
All right, so I saw a couple more of our applicants come in the door. I don't know, is there anybody else on the list who's here? Are you here for the Housing Authority? All right. You were here first, sir, Mr. Ellis. Could you come up to the podium, please?
Good evening. You know, that's, my name is John Taylor Ellis. I typically go by the middle name. You know, I've been a South Kingstown resident for 35 years about. I've, you know, it's a work for the last 13 years for a nonprofit based in Warwick, but that works statewide on homeless issues, providing housing and social services for people that are chronically homeless and disabled and other extremely low income. Said I was the, you know, it's been the, you know, it's a housing development manager for that relatively small nonprofit, but we were able to, you know, to develop some new, that said, housing in the Warwick area. And I also am working now there part-time and doing some asset management, trying to help keep our properties being, you know, really wonderful properties in, you know, in Warwick, so they can be like a real credit to the community and really, you know, fit in with the community. I served on like the Affordable Housing Collaborative, was a founding member of that after the state required, you know, towns like South Kingstown and the other municipalities that hadn't satisfied a 10 percent goal. And I, you know, served on that for eight years. And, you know, I think our town, I was just taking like a little look at where we're at, you know, you know, some of the, you know, some of the recent data. It looks like, you know, family housing, which obviously is really important, you know, so is the elderly housing and the special needs housing. But I think family housing is obviously so critical for the, for the, you know, it's for the community, because obviously, as we know, families really participate and join in and contribute and are really a big, you know, part of the fabric of our, of our towns like South Kingstown. And of the 100, let's see, so, family housing, South Kingstown currently has a total of, I think, 161 or something close to that, family housing units that would be listed as the affordable units. And those are really like the ones that we need to count. We, we can't count dilapidated, single-family homes that are assessed at a low value or anything, you know, that's, we have to stick with the state count of what is affordable, something that's deed restricted, something that has had a subsidy. You know, deed restriction means it's going to be there for like a long period of time and that is, you know, that's it, quality housing, healthy housing, you know, for, you know, for people of low and moderate income. And of the, of like the 161, it looks like three-quarters or more are, you know, would be associated with the work of the South Kingstown Housing Authority. I think we've only added in 13 or 14 years, we've only added, I think, 29 family units in the town that are affordable, which is obviously extremely low, a real big problem. There's obviously, that said affordability issues over a broad spectrum of people. But obviously, the work of like the Housing Authority is critical, given the really limited resources that the town has for low-income family housing. Almost all of it is being managed by that Housing Authority. And I think, you know, so, you know, being like a part of the board, if I were to be appointed, I would certainly want to, you know, work with the members of the board and, you know, try to be a part of that team with the board and staff, really. And then also try to find ways that we can also promote and expand the affordable housing, you know, throughout the community, you know, because there's an obvious need. So I think, you know, that there's so much to be done on this issue and, you know, I'd be willing to, you know, try to help out there if, if I am so called. But, you know, it's, do you have any questions or anything?
Questions for Mr. Taylor Ellis. Taylor, have you done work outside of the U.S.? I'm only asking because I noticed your email address.
What's that?
Your email address is specific.
No, that, no, that's, did not work out of the, I did, you know, travel to, you know, places outside of the U.S., but no, that's just my email handle or, yep.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. If I didn't mention it before, we have seven interviews tonight for this open slot. We're hoping to get through them all tonight and make a decision later on in the meeting, so we will be letting folks know soon. Let's see, we got John Glassheen. Welcome.
I'm not sure what the agenda is. Do I sing or dance, or?
Well, just state your name for the record first.
It's John Glassheen. I live in 73 Glen Rock Road, West Kingston. We've been there for about 20 years.
And the typical question they sort of ask is just, you know, what interests you about serving on the Housing Authority Board and what skills do you think you would bring to the table that would be very useful?
Well, as many people may know, I ran South County Community Action for many years, so I have familiarity with people who are struggling to make a living and figure out how to get started and how to maintain themselves. And I think that's some of that same issue is part of what is called for with the Housing Authority and think that my past experience would help lend to doing that well.
Any questions for Mr.? Could you go a little bit more into what went into the tri-county community action program when you were running it and how that interplayed with the Housing Authority?
It wasn't tri-county, man, it was South County.
Just South County.
And, for example, we ran Head Start Program, which was dealing with early education for low-income families and a number of other things, which is trying to work to create jobs and to enable people to take those jobs and to do them well. So a lot of it had to do with organizing people and organizing community efforts towards supporting their efforts to maintain themselves.
Any other questions for?
What was your biggest challenge when you ran South County Community Action in terms of something that you really wanted to do to help the folks that you're supposed to be helping, but you kind of hit a wall or weren't getting funding or?
It was always a problem to get resources, to have the funding available to help create jobs and sustain people in those jobs. So it was probably, South Kingstown was actually always a prime contributor to that, to the successes that we had, where some of the other towns were slower at coming to help out people who need.
All right, thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
And Sue, you are also on the list.
I know a lot about this because I was married, I'm married to John, and I listened to his struggles for 15 years when he ran South County Community Action. But my own interest is, I'm retired now and I want to give back to the community. And housing has always been such a critical thing. I mean, it's been critical to me. I bought my first house when I was 27 years old. It was a rental property. I went through all the landlord things. My second house was also a rental property. And it wasn't until we moved down here 20 years ago that we've had, we've lived in a single-family house. But I just, I just feel so much for the people because I know that housing is so critical. I mean, and, and it's tough, and it's tough in this, especially in this, in this state because, you know, your income, all your income goes to housing. So I want to be able to do as much as possible to help people get into the housing and have a stable environment because, I mean, there's a program in Providence called Housing First. If you don't have a house and you don't have a place to live, then, you know, you're kind of sunk because it's hard to get a job, it's hard to, it's just hard to sustain yourself and a family. So I think housing is very, very critical.
Thank you. Questions for Sue?
Other experiences, I was in business. I worked in business for 40 years or whatever. My first job, though, was with the City of Providence, so I have some familiarity with municipal, although it was a jobs program, not a housing program. But, but it was federally funded, so I was familiar with how the federal funding works. And then I went into computers and I've been, basically did computers for 30 years, but...
Very good. Any other questions? All right, Sue, thank you very much. And so I will just read out some names. If you are here, raise your hand and just come forward. Wendy Romero. Katie Reed. And Eleanor Reynolds. All right, I don't think any of them are here at the moment, so.
Are you on the list? Eleanor, are you Eleanor? No, just waving.
No. Okay. All right, so, I mean, they can still show up sometime before 7:30 and hopefully we can interview them. In the meantime, where is Rob? So three of our interviewees have not shown up yet, so we'll just get into the agenda and then come back to them if they show up.
Very good. All right, so we have a lot on the agenda tonight. I don't think there's anything that should necessarily be extraordinarily time-consuming, but there is a lot on the agenda. So let me start from the top and note that we have had a request earlier in the afternoon that item 7H, a correspondence from Ms. Mosher, be taken off the consent agenda. We have folks who are going to want to speak to that, so I'd ask that the council consider removing 7H from the consent agenda and opening that for discussion. On communications, we have a communication from Sarah Delmonico about Ram's Point Marina. As the council knows, we're in negotiations with Ram Point. We've hit a bit of a snag and the snag is essentially this. Ram Point has had two long-term leases, both 20- or 25-year leases, so we're now contemplating the third 20-year lease for the current occupants of the property. In 87, the lease identified, a lease in 87, identified riparian rights as part of what was going to be leased. The most recent lease in 2000 did not identify those riparian rights as the subject of a lease. And when we were doing our review of materials prior to entering into negotiations, we noticed that the riparian rights weren't identified in the 2000 lease agreement. And we asked the tenants if they'd be willing to sort of talk about how we deal with riparian rights, particularly because as public access to the water becomes more scarce, tying up riparian rights adjacent to Marina Park, and talking about the area from, is it Pond Street? Salt Pond. Salt Pond Road on the south side up to the highway, this, these are the riparian rights. Right now, there's about 15 slips that the Marina operates. So that's been a point of contention and I think our last, well, I know, our last discussion left them with the possibility of a 20-year lease on the main Marina, the land and all of the riparian rights associated with the Marina proper, and short-term leases for the riparian rights, so as to give future councils the opportunity to review those as demands for public access to the waterway increases. So that's the issue that we've been dealing with. We will continue in negotiations. I'm happy to set up an executive session to talk about what I've essentially just laid out in more detail at the council's request. If that's something the council would like, it'll be on the agenda as an executive session for the next meeting. Notting of heads, I'll take as a yes, we'll do that. The next item is an email from Joan Castanza, expressing concerns about an event that happened this weekend. It is somewhat overtaken by events because the event has occurred, but the concern was that Nerf shooting game is probably not an appropriate activity for the rec center to engage in, was Ms. Castanza's assertion. It was well-attended and enjoyed by the participants over the weekend. I'd suggest that this is an item that we should refer to the Recreation Commission for evaluation, but, you know, this is, this is sort of the question of whether or not we're going to be promoting a gun culture by having a shooting sport engaged in by rec center participants. The unruly gathering ordinance gathered a lot of attention. It is actually on the county, the solicitor's report for discussion tonight. We have had some, well, we've had a lot of communication from the public about this ordinance. Folks are concerned largely about the impact on their ability to engage in assemblies larger than five people. I think that folks don't really fully appreciate the place where the ordinance comes into effect is when you've got five or more people causing a problem. It's not just the gatherings that triggers the enforcement activity that the police would engage in. But this is a subject that is on the solicitor's report. It will be subject to discussion tonight and you may have some folks here who want to talk about it. The South Kingston Board of Trustees for the library have asked that the council give them some guidance on a letter that they would like to send to DOT regarding the intersection at 138 and Upper College Road. That intersection right now is not ADA accessible, it's not a very safe intersection. It's one that the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has identified as problematic and it's one that frankly, everyone who's ever tried to cross the road there knows is a, is a dangerous intersection. There is a project that the Rhode Island Department of Transportation has identified that would improve that crosswalk, but we are still years away from it actually being funded. I think we said this afternoon, is John here? No, I think we said this afternoon that we were looking at funding for that project on the DOT schedule being still three or four years out. The university is planning to do some revisions to, or make some changes to Upper College Road and in doing so, will impact parking available for the library, which means that we're likely to have more patrons for the library, parking at the church parking lot and having to cross that intersection. They think we have to move on this faster than three or four years. And again, I, I can't find anyone, certainly not the town engineer, not the town Department of Public Services, not the police department, I can't find anyone who disagrees with the trustees' assessment that we have to move on this faster if we can. It's a DOT project, all we can do is plead. And they're asking that the council give their, give some advice on how we go about pleading with the DOT to move this up. Specifically, their approach is to put a letter together from the trustees and to have as many people sign onto that letter as possible. One of the ways that that could be done is by individual council members signing their letter, as well as individual board members, as well as individuals in the community who focus on this thing. That is certainly an option. The other would be for them to send a letter and for the council to send a letter qua council and for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee to send a letter as the advisory committee. I, I think that we can't do too much. I think it's going to get, it's going to take a lot for Rhode Island DOT to really understand how urgent this issue is, so I think that all of the above is not an inappropriate So the next correspondence on here is a letter from Dave Pelizetti, the chairman of the Recreation Commission. At its last meeting, the Recreation Commission spoke about concerns they have about the impact or potential impact of relocating the high school to Curtis Corner. One of the designs that was presented by RGB publicly would have placed a parking lot where there is currently a Frisbee golf hole. I think it's the fourth hole of the Frisbee golf course. And obviously, just any development in that area is going to impact access to, parking for, and potentially use of the fields. So they've asked that the council consider the impacts of the plans for relocation of the high school with regard to the rec fields. We had a meeting this past Saturday at the high school that was designed to focus on what should happen at Columbia Street should the high school be relocated. I think it's probably appropriate that we have an event at Curtis Corner that asks the question, "What happens in this neighborhood should the high school be relocated to Curtis Corner?" During the manager's report, I'll go over the, the results of the meeting on Saturday a little bit more in more detail. But I will say, it's clear that we still have a whole lot of information that needs to get out to the community. I, I think that the project is not yet well-understood and I think we need to figure out how to have more events and more opportunities for the answering of questions about the project as it is conceived, about what happens if the project goes the way it's intended to go, and what happens if it doesn't go the way it's intended to go. I think there's just a lot of questions out there and I think more opportunities for that communication, rather than fewer, is going to help. Tonight is the first of our, as we discussed at the last council meeting, we're going to ask that each of the boards and committees come to the council and give a report. Tonight is the first of our committee reports. We'll have the Conservation Committee here tonight to give a brief update on the activities of the Conservation Committee and you'll hear from the chairman about what the committee has been up to and any observations they have about the policy areas that they've been charged with advising the council on. The solicitor's report has two items on it. The first is a draft. Now, this is actually an item that I'd like to spend some time talking about in the work session. The solicitor- The solicitor at a previous town council meeting was tasked with going back and looking at ordinances that they had prepared, that the solicitor's office had prepared for other communities relative to the keeping of fowl. The solicitor's office went back, looked at the ordinances that they had prepared for other communities, and proposed, offered to the council language for a possible ordinance. That is on tonight as a report. This is not an ordinance. It was not, very specifically, was not put on as a notice of order. This is not the first reading. This is just their draft to the council to give you some thing to talk about with regard to possible regulation of chickens. The chickens regulation at this point is nothing more than the work product of the solicitor's office. It is not something that any council member has drafted or has had any part in drafting. It is merely a representation of the previous work done by the counselors, I'm sorry, by the solicitor's office with regard to chicken regulation. If the council should choose to accept this draft as, as just interesting advice and do nothing more with it, that is certainly within the council's prerogative tonight. If the council wants to send the solicitor's office back to work on a different concept other than the concepts that they've worked on in the past for other communities, that's within the council's prerogative. If the council wants to take this ordinance and modify it in discussion and have us come back and do a notice of publication so that it actually becomes an ordinance under consideration by the council, you can of course do that. We've had a lot of, of folks who have contacted our office over the last couple of days, most of it running anti-regulation of chickens. So I would, I would suggest that this is not a wildly popular idea. At this point, it is not an idea that anyone is a proponent of. You've simply got a report from the solicitor suggesting this is what has been done elsewhere. We also have on the solicitor's report possible discussion of the reconsideration of the unruly gatherings ordinance that was passed at the last council agenda. The ordinance that was passed at the last agenda, or the last council, is in fact an ordinance. So we can't just reconsider an ordinance. It would have to be amended or revoked the same way that any other ordinance would be amended or revoked. So if, if this is something that the council wants to do, we're going to have to publish notice of, of the council's intent to have a public hearing to consider amendment or revocation of that ordinance. I will say with regard to this one, we've also gotten a lot of comments, a lot of public input. I think folks were largely surprised by the ordinance. I think that that more than anything else is what I'm seeing in public comments. I think that the idea that no one wants drunken college students urinating on their front lawn at 2:00 in the morning while screaming the lyrics to their favorite rock song is a concept that most people agree with. But I don't think that the ordinance was understood through the public debate, which was had in one night, as well as, as perhaps it could have been. This has got me thinking about how we handle ordinances in general in South Kingstown, and I'd suggest that when we get to this item, it might make some sense to talk about how we go about notification. Our process here is not like the process used in many communities where they'll do a first reading and then the second reading. That first reading concept puts people on notice that this is the first bite at the apple. It's the opportunity to sort of think through it. We go through a similar procedure here. We just don't call it a first reading. We call it an order of notice, and it's quite often done as a consent agenda item. So it's not really the subject of a public hearing, though it could be discussed since it's on the agenda. I'd like to have a conversation and get a sense of the council on whether it makes sense for us to pursue a little bit more formal two-step process in order to give folks the opportunity to chime in earlier. And going from there, what else? We have a resolution authorizing the council president to sign the 2020 Initial Boundary Validation Program Form for the U.S. Census. Nothing has changed. We checked the river. The narrow river has not shifted any, in any ways, and the boundaries of the town of South Kingstown are as they were in 2010. We can safely tell the Census Bureau that our boundaries have not changed. So I would ask that the council authorize the council president to sign a form saying just that. The two orders of notice that we have for public hearings tonight. We actually have three, but we're only going to, no, we have two, I'm sorry. The two that we have tonight are an order of notice amending the veterans rebate for tax abatement. We need to do this as part of our budget process. We're on schedule to be where we need to be. The second, which is eight, eight H, is a 13H, is an ordinance that would increase the elderly abatement by 5%. When we spoke at the last council meeting, I indicated that we have not amended our veteran, I'm sorry, our elderly tax abatement in the last 12 years, and we are way behind the inflation rate. We're 20% behind what inflation has done over those 12 years, and this amended ordinance would bring us up by 5%. It's not a complete catch-up, but it would begin to, to catch us up somewhat. This is an order of notice. As we were just saying, this is the subject of discussion tonight. You can certainly, you know, amend these numbers. We can have a discussion about why 5% probably is about as good as we can do in one year. We can't fix 12 years of neglect overnight, but I think this is a good step toward getting the abatement to where it ought to be. And of course, we'll have a public hearing if the council should order it, so we can discuss this at that time as well. Item 13F is a resolution authorizing the approval of bonds of $4 million for school construction related to work that has already been done. This is the bond authorization that was made by the voters in 2014. The monies have been expended on HVAC systems for Mattoonik, roof repairs at the high school, the items that had been identified in 2014 as the subjects of that bond request. The work is complete. The work was first paid for, not quite 18 months ago, about 20 months ago. In order to qualify for IRS tax exemption, those bonds have got to be issued within 18 months after the first work was paid for. We need to go to market in March or April of this year in order to make sure that all of our bonds will be tax exempt bonds. We've got an application pending before Rybeck. They believed at the bond council's office that we needed a resolution in order to authorize the finance director to go ahead and, and seek Rybeck's approval. We went back through our files. We found the 2015, no, I'm sorry, 2014 legislation that went before the state legislature sent that to bond council on Friday, Thursday. Thursday, had not heard back from bond council, and so we put the resolution on just in case. It turns out that when bond council saw the legislation, the wording of the legislation as it was enacted, that sufficed. They're fine. And that's the agenda. As I say, a lot on it, but it should not be.
All right. Thanks, Rob. Any questions for Rob real quickly? All right. In that case, have any of our other interviewees showed up in, while we've been discussing the agenda? So these are interviewees for the Housing Authority. Three applicants. All right. I suppose not. And in that case, we have about seven minutes here before the meeting begins. We'll take a recess, and then we'll come back for the regular session.
See how many people are left.
I, I guess that they, it's not as important to say that you didn't pay a back in any of those.
I think, I think we have a lot of good people. If I had to pick someone, I think I would pick Chris Little. I'd like Taylor Ellis.
You can't. You think either Chris or Taylor? If I had to, if I had to rank them, I'd go Little. Huh? I don't know. I met him once.
Is it?
Yeah.
Is it?
It's a
Sue. Sue, over. All right, folks, we're going to begin very soon. If you would all take your seats and quiet down. Welcome to this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is Monday, February 24th. The time is 7:30. Our first order of business is the Pledge to the Flag. Please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
It sounds so much better when the room is full. So will the clerk please take the roll? Thank you very much. Item four is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve for A and B.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda. I believe we had one item to remove.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda and remove item 7H. I believe it's H. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries as well. And now, because of overwhelming public interest, we're going to bring forward item nine on the agenda, which is the solicitor's report.
Mr. President, we've actually moved it recently. It's going to be item 11.
Oh, item 11, yes. Item 11, the solicitor's report. And 11A is a discussion of a preliminary draft amendments to the town code, Chapter Three, animals and fowl relative to the regulation of chickens. If, Rob, you wouldn't mind just sort of talking about how this came to be?
Sure. So it's unfortunate that folks have read this as an ordinance pending before the council tonight. It's not. This is an item that is being reported on by the town solicitor because the council wanted to explore the possibilities and sort of get an understanding of what chicken ordinances look like. This ordinance is a version of an ordinance that the town solicitor's office has put together for other communities. What are they?
Barrington.
Barrington's ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve for A and B.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda. I believe we had one item to remove.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda and remove item seven H. I believe it's H. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries as well. And now, because of overwhelming public interest, we're gonna bring forward item nine on the agenda, which is the Solicitor's report.
Mr. President, we've actually moved it recently. It's gonna be item eleven.
Oh. Item eleven, yes. Item eleven, the Solicitor's report. And eleven A is a discussion of a preliminary draft amendments to the town code, chapter three, animals and foul relative to the regulation of chickens. If, Rob, you wouldn't mind just sort of talking about how this came to be?
Sure. So it's unfortunate that folks have read this as an ordinance pending before the council tonight. It's not. This is an item that is being reported on by the town solicitor because the council wanted to explore the possibilities and sort of get an understanding of what chicken ordinances look like. This ordinance is a version of an ordinance that the town solicitor's office has put together for other communities. What are they?
Barrington.
Barrington's ordinance. This was meant to be the s-
Hello?
This was meant to be the solicitor's way of getting the council to understand the issues around the regulation of chickens. This is not a pending ordinance. The council has not asked for an ordinance on this. No member of the council has been party to drafting this ordinance. This is really just the Solicitor's report, meant to be a discussion, when it comes to the Solicitor's report, between the town council and their attorney advisor on whether or not this makes any sense. She was going to speak and will speak tonight about the challenges, the benefits, if she can, for the folks in Barrington, and then the council was going to decide whether this was an issue they wanted to pursue at all. So that's where we are.
Amy, putting you on the spot.
Sure. So as Rob said, when we are asked to draft ordinances and when we are asked to draft preliminary versions of ordinances, our starting point is what have other communities done? And our initial starting point will be, have we done something similar for another community that we have represented before? This, as Rob said, is a slightly tweaked version of Barrington's chicken ordinance. Now, we all know, South Kingstown is very different from Barrington. It is simply a starting point for discussion. So I am happy to answer any questions you have. I will note, I've communicated with the solicitor about this, and he reports that the council last considered the topic of chicken regulation back in 2011, and that there was pretty overwhelming public opposition against taking any steps in that direction. So several weeks ago, when our office was asked to come up with something, a starting point for discussion, I looked into our files on this and found that we had presented, I believe, a version of this back in 2011. Now, I don't know if we ever presented the ordinance for council action, or if it was brought up for discussion, but in any event, there was something drafted in our electronic files that looked a lot like what we've presented tonight. So as for how it works in Barrington, I can't speak to implementation. I don't have the experience from 2011, but I think it works fairly well in that in the five, going on six years, I've been with the firm, we haven't had any chicken-related
Could I make a quick comment?
Sure.
We all know at South Kingstown, we're more farm than anything else, you know, farm country. The solicitor, this came about when I asked a question, I think, three or four meetings ago, in regards to certain parts of town where lots are, say, five or 10,000 square feet. I had a constituent ask me a question. We've been having issues in a particular neighborhood with chickens, so that's where the question came about in terms of having the Solicitor's office look into it. I do think that it was, could have been handled better in terms of the way it was on the agenda. Also, I was out of the country and came back and found it on the agenda, so it wasn't gonna change at that point. So what I wanted to say is that basically, I think, there was probably a good amount of miscommunication and people interpreting it themselves, especially on social media, that kind of got this going. But really, the issue that I had, or the question that I had posed, was a simple question with one simple intent, was to talk about the issue of if you are in a neighborhood, say, where there's 5,000, 10,000 square foot lots, should you be responsible for making sure that your chickens stay on your property and don't wander onto your neighbor's property? And I think the concern I have is that, you know, some neighbors would love to be able to work that out with their neighbors, but some neighbors are either elderly or are concerned about asking their neighbors, they don't want, look to have a bad relationship with their neighbor. And we have a situation where, you know, I've talked to the building official and was told that we don't have anything that we can really do to help in this situation, so that's why the question was asked. It was never planned on passing an ordinance. I think unfortunately, when people started reading the ordinance from Barrington, it was far-reaching, and I apologize to the community for that. But at the same time, none of us, I think, up here at the council have any intent of putting a similar ordinance in place. It was a question that was asked, and the Solicitor's office was gonna report back to the council.
Okay, so if the question is, can the council do something to prevent chickens from roaming onto a budding property, whether it's just in, say, the R-10 zone, or, you know, whether we tie it to lot sizes or town-wide, the answer is we certainly can. So with no ordinance in place, a neighbor could, in theory, bring a civil lawsuit for something in the realm of trespass or nuisance for animals, whether they're chickens or other animals, animals walking onto their property. You have a right to exclude things from your property, and that includes other people's pets or farm animals. If we make that an ordinance, if we enact that prohibition in the form of an ordinance, that means that either the police department or the building official, and in reality, I'd say it's gonna be the police department, will be obligated to enforce that as a town rule versus what may be happening now, and I don't know if there have been any calls to the police department about this, is that in many cases, police departments will say, "Civil issues are civil issues, not criminal, not for us to enforce." So if the direction is draft something very limited to address that specific issue, we can certainly do so.
Again, it wasn't to ask to draft, it was more to get knowledge and understand how it would work and what implications it would have. And also, sometimes there are unintended consequences as well, so you'd wanna look at those as well.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So councillor, your example, though, is really the perfect example of all of these challenges we face. Last year, we had someone who came to the council and was concerned about bees trespassing across the-
(laughing)
Yes, bees trespassing. The noise, trespass from the ordinance at the last meeting. We have trespass issues with regard to the shoreline. What happens quite often is that folks are in a situation where they want to be neighborly, they don't wanna put up with the nonsense from the party house next door, or they don't wanna put up with the chicken manure from next door, but they don't wanna engage their neighbors in a conflict. They don't wanna ruin a relationship. So they ask the government to be the intervener. They ask the government to be the middleman balancing their rights. And the choice that the council has to make in all of these cases is, is there a large enough interest? And is the harm being suffered by anyone so great that it warrants the government's intervention? That's exactly the challenge that you face in all of these situations. They're all the same in that regard.
All right, so do we wanna have a little discussion about this ordinance? I mean, Brian, I think you've sort of clarified how this, you know, got onto the agenda, and I think, I may speak for the whole council, when I say, we're not considering any ordinance like this. Are you interested in seeing a more limited ordinance like Amy suggested?
I think, since we have so many people here, I think I'd be just interested in seeing what folks, how they feel in the audience and making a decision after that.
So on that vein, I'd like to know how big of an issue or a problem we think this is, and, you know, are we trying to fix something that's not dramatically broken?
So I will say that we do get more complaints about bees than we do about chickens.
I think that's your answer.
I have no interest in pursuing anything on this matter. I thank the solicitor for giving us the, you know, the information that they did, and that's the end of it for me.
In my 15 months in the town council, no issues in regard to this matter have come to my attention, and in living in this town for 25 years, I have not seen or acknowledged any issues of that matter. So, and my position is, we do not need to add regulation in regard to this matter, so.
Yeah. So, yes, so I recognize that many of you here came to speak on this issue. I would just ask you to consider the fact that this ordinance that everybody's so upset about is not actually a viable ordinance. So if you wanna speak to the idea that is perhaps being considered of some effort to stop chickens from trespassing in zones where there's small lot sizes, I think that those comments might be more helpful. And again, if you hear comments that you think are becoming repetitive, you probably don't need to repeat them, too. I think we all understand that this ordinance is not going this way. So, yes, it was never seriously being considered. So with that being said, if you would like to come and speak on the matter, please come up to the podium, state your name for the record. First come, first served. I will be putting a three-minute time limit on comments.
Hi, my name is Jessica Cottrell-Mehu. I'm about as west Kingston as you can come. My family's been here 120 years. We had a dairy farm until, well, you guys kinda put a kibosh on that with the solar panels, but that's not what I'm here about. I'm here about my chickens, because I live in downtown Wakefield, and when I say downtown, I mean right behind the post office, big post office. I've got chickens in my backyard, 'cause my kids show, my kids show. I have showbirds. Like, I go out and spend good money. And when I say good money, I mean like upwards of $50 a chicken, so my kids can show, because keeping a cow in downtown Wakefield isn't exactly a viable option, although I have had a calf in my yard before because it needed some serious rehab. Anyway. So I just, I wanted to throw some statistics at you guys, because I have a feeling, most of you aren't farmers. The average American is four generations away from food production, and I'm guessing you guys all fall into that lot? Four generations, maybe?
Uh, one.
Yeah, so I'm number five, my kids are number six. I don't wanna break that, even though I live in downtown. I like the fact that I can walk everywhere with my kids. My kids love the bike path. They love it. I don't wanna have to move because my chickens can't be here. And the whole idea about a vet putting my chickens down, um, who's gonna pay that bill? Because, no. In West Kingston, when I, for over 25 years, there was a farm called Verges Farm. That's who I'm named after, it's my great uncle Jesse. They raised 400,000 meat birds in West Kingston. Yeah, 400,000, right on Waite's Corner Road. You wouldn't know it now because it's just a giant shed, two of them. One held 125,000 birds, the other one held 75,000 birds. Every year, twice a year, my great uncle would raise them from chicks and slaughter them. Then the other little thing I wanna talk about, when you get a chick, Rhode Island state law says, "I have to buy 12 from a hatchery." You guys said five. So you're trying to go around Rhode Island state law? Like, okay. Or when you wanna order from a hatchery, which is what you typically do with showbirds, you have an order of 25. What am I supposed to do if you guys say I can only have five? Do I tell my kids, "Oh, sorry, guys, like, can't do that now because the town says no"? Are you gonna be the one to tell my kids, "Oh, sorry, we can't do that anymore"? This is something I'm like ridiculously passionate about. I am as South Kingstown as they come. I lived here 28 years. I left to go to college in Vermont and I came back. I want my kids to grow up here, but I don't wanna ever hear about some silly ordinance that's gonna affect their little projects, because honestly, like, you should've seen my niece's face when she got grand champion production bird at the Washington County Fair, because she had this gorgeous barred rock chicken, which is those like black and white stripey ones, 'cause I'm guessing you guys don't know breeds, so I'm just trying to lay it out for you. A black and white bird about this big, her name is Henny, and she got grand champion production bird, which means she is the best bird that lays the most eggs. Like, she is what you want in a chicken. If I have to only have five, that means I have to find a home for them, 'cause I'm more of a, let's let them age out on their own, but I'm also not opposed to, you know, processing them myself, so just think about those numbers, please, and thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Susan Rubenoff. I'm a little nervous to be up here, because I don't want you to come looking for my chickens, but nevertheless, I appreciate you hearing all this, and isn't this wonderful democracy at work, that all these people are coming out for chickens? And I'm just thinking, I've been raising chickens for 35 years, and because of that, my son is an international poultry vet, and he also has his master's in public health, and that was from starting chickens here in Wakefield. But I was just thinking, we can have a committee, if you want to research this more, that maybe a bunch of us could volunteer and sit together with whomever is interested, so that we can come up with something fair, because what's right in Wakefield might be a little different than what's in escarpau or a mattoonik. So I'm open to doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bill McHusker from Mattoonik. I think it's unfortunate, too, that this was put on the agenda the way that it was, 'cause when something's on the agenda, we tend to think that everybody needs to take it seriously, and actually, my idea was to actually come in to help, to see what we can do, because there are part of it that I didn't agree with, part of it I do agree with. So I'm glad that you're not considering it the way that it is, I'm glad that you're willing to work with it, and consider what Ms. Rubenoff said, or what I've said, that we'll be willing to help it when we get to the point where we can work on it. So.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Bill.
Good evening. If you're here tonight to talk about chickens, you're probably one of the many responsible poultry farmers that we have in our community. Unfortunately, that is not the case in all communities. If you're laughing now about ordinance for chicken, you probably have not gone out to your deck to enjoy supper in a sunset and look at the ocean and have to clean off your deck furniture from chickens that live two houses down. If you're laughing right now, you probably have not had your garden beds dug up by chickens that are not your own. If you're laughing right now, you probably have not been able to walk in your yard or have your grandchildren walk in your yard barefoot for a few years now. If you're a retiree and you speak to the neighbor and the neighbor says, "What do you want me to do? Where are you? You've been living there for over 50 years." Finally, if you call the police department or animal control, they tell you that there's no regulation in South Kingstown, there's nothing you could do. So now, would you like your aging parent or relative to go and have a face-to-face confrontation with someone who is unwilling to hear your concerns? I don't think so. And finally, I did a little research myself through the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and found out that in 2019, we had the highest number of cases of salmonella caused by backyard chickens. The elderly and young children are most susceptible. So I urge you to consider adopting a ordinance, not saying it has to be the one that's in front of you now, but to definitely consider it. I think there's a need. I think there's a need. I don't think it's probably the people that are here tonight, but there is a need in South Kingstown for us to look at it. Hope Terrell, I'm happy to be on any committee. Thank you.
Doug Gobey, out in West Kingston. Can't believe I'm here again. I don't own chickens. I don't want to get everyone angry at me. I don't even really like them very much. I have my own personal reasons for that. I think the call for a rooster is actually abhorrent. I have neighbors next door who have them, and it doesn't bother me at all. Because why should it? Why should the yappy dog next door bother me when it's someone else's property? I would be upset if someone else's property is coming onto my property and causing problems. But just because we can pass a law to prevent something does not necessarily mean that we should at the end of the day. Additionally, my primary concern, especially now that I know we're not moving on this, is because people are here because this was incredibly poorly managed. It's not like this was coming out of nowhere and people were confused about this. This is an item on the agenda tonight that we can all go and read that says it is going to be a discussion of an ordinance. We don't start at the level of thermonuclear warfare and work our way down to BB guns. We don't just say, "Oh, we might think about it, but nope." Because then we have to come out every single time that we see something like this because it might be something we're dealing with, or it might not be something we're dealing with. We don't want to start with something that Barrington has. We want to start with a discussion in South Kingstown. I think that makes perfect sense. And if we have a problem, and we've heard both sides a little bit tonight, I hope we hear other people. Hopefully, we can get into that discussion and solve that problem. I think that's perfectly reasonable. What is not reasonable is to take something that may or may not work, we're told we don't even have a lot of information on this case, if it's working in Barrington and say, "Sure, let's just copy and paste that onto South Kingstown." That is slapshot. That is just lazy on the highest order, and we expect better of our elected officials and those people who work for them. Thank you.
I just want, I just want to clarify for the council. It was not copy and paste. There were tweaks made to the ordinance. So, I just want to clarify that.
Thanks, Amy.
Brent White, Wakefield. I just want everybody to think about the school systems as well. You have the schools breeding chickens. And they've done it since I was in school. And chickens go home with kids since I was in school and continue to happen. So, it's just a thought process of the whole town in understanding what the town does already. Thank you.
I appreciate all those comments pretty much. I actually have chickens at home and do know what a barred rock looks like. We have a rooster in the pot, actually. Wasn't supposed to be a rooster. So, it's been suggested we could form a committee to look at chicken regulation.
I think that's a great idea.
Would you want to draft up a resolution maybe for the next meeting, Rob, to create such a, not a standing committee, obviously, but...
Ad-hoc committee for, to provide advice to the council on how to proceed with or without regulating chickens.
Correct. Does, so, I don't think that that needs any type of resolution.
Yeah, the resolution to create such a committee is, you know, an easy thing for us to draft and...
And how would the folks that offered their services, who should they reach out to?
Once the council has voted to create such a committee, we will advertise positions, and anyone who'd like to apply can apply for the position. They come in, I would imagine, just like any other advisory committee member wannabe. And you interview and you decide who you'd like to put on the committee to advise the council on next steps.
All right. I think that that sounds sensible. And one of the things that this committee can, of course, do is recommend no action. So, if you're interested in being a part of a committee like this, please, I would say, send an email to the town manager.
Might I suggest five-member? I'm kidding.
Oh, I mean, we don't have to have a 50-member committee.
Any thoughts on how large a committee?
I'd say somewhere between five and nine.
All right.
Anybody have any other thoughts on the size of such a committee? Five to nine. All right. Do I hear a motion on 11A? Can send it to the town manager for crafting.
I'll make a motion to send item 11A to the town manager for a resolution to create an ad-hoc committee in regards to chickens.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you for coming. Yeah. All right. Speak into the microphone, please.
Did you hear this insanity? Like, making a committee to talk about chickens? Are you freaking insane? Excuse my language, I'm sorry. This is a farming community, and we're making a committee to talk about chickens.
We understand it's a farming community.
It's insane. There are so many things you could put your time into, other than chickens. And that's what this town is worried about?
Thank you, sir. Now, 11B is a discussion of possible amendment or repeal of an ordinance adopted on February 10th, 2020, amending the Town Code, Chapter 12, offenses and miscellaneous provisions. Article 2, unruly gatherings. This is also related to a couple communication items we had, but I thought, since there might be some interest from folks for this item as well, we'd bring that forward as well. So, if you wanted to, again, lay out the basic parameters of the discussion, Rob or Amy, that'd be fine.
Sure. On this one, as you know, the ordinance was adopted last month, last meeting, and Councilman Mackin T. contacted our office last week regarding possible reconsideration of the vote. And as, as the town manager explained, any change to an enacted ordinance must go through the same process laid out in the charter. So, there are a few options that the council has. One is completely repeal the ordinance. Second is amend it with or without a resolution to the effect of study, study the issue further. And the amendment could be something such as, "This ordinance shall take effect," rather than "upon passage," which is how it was enacted, "ordinance shall take effect at some date in the future, three months, six months." That's sometimes done in the case of ordinances that are thought to require some more broad notification to the community. And the other option, I think, is amend it substantively, perhaps to more closely mirror Narrogansett's. Now, I know it does not include the actual orange sticker provision. It is based off Narrogansett's ordinance, which has been upheld as constitutional. That ordinance was challenged initially when it was enacted, and the legal challenge went to the First Circuit Court of Appeals, which is one step below the U.S. Supreme Court. And the U.S. Court of Appeals for the First Circuit blessed that ordinance facially. To my knowledge, the ordinance has not been challenged as applied, meaning that as it's prosecuted in municipal court, no one has appealed or successfully appealed the ordinance being applied to them. So, our initial advice to the council and, which resulted in the ordinance that was drafted and enacted, is that it is constitutional to pass something like this. But if the council wants to change it, we can, you know, we're ready to draft it and amend it as directed.
So, I would add to that by reminding the council of how we got here. The way that the council came to ask the Solicitor's Office to draft an ordinance is that we had a number of residents, particularly residents around the university, who came in saying, "Look, my neighborhood is going to hell. We've got parties going on constantly. We've got people in the neighborhood who are selling their property because the ruckus being caused by frequent flyers on, on the party circuit is just ruining our quality of life. We can't, you know, we can't look out the window at 2:00 in the morning without seeing kids urinating on the front lawn. We've got problems that are not being addressed because the police are saying there is no noise ordinance, and there's no tool that they've got other than to go shoo the kids from, from the house where the party is being had. And as soon as the police leave, the kids all come back in." This was the challenge. And on the night that the council held the hearing for this ordinance, we heard from others who said, "It's not just the university kids. It's Airbnb parties. I've got a property next to mine," one of the residents noted, "where the landlord lives in Long Island, and it's rented on Airbnb continuously, and it's just bachelor parties." They're just renting it out for bachelor parties all year long. And I can't sleep because they're partying at 2:00 in the morning. The police come, they tell them to quiet down, the police leave, and the music goes back up." That's the challenge that the council was posed with addressing. Now, again, as I said earlier tonight, this is, you know, this is the formula for all of these challenges. It's property owner versus property owner. A property owner in Long Island has the right to rent his property in Wakefield out. A property owner in Wakefield has got the right to be able to sleep through the night. When one or the other is interfering, they come and they say, "Look, we need the government to intervene here. My property right to enjoy the quiet, sleepful night that I deserve in my own home is being disrupted by this guy from Long Island who's renting his property out to people who don't care about my rights. And having a conversation with my neighbor in this case is meaningless because it's an Airbnb and he'll be gone two days from now." So, this is a little bit of a variation on that theme. The folks who are causing the disturbance are in the community, but they're not necessarily members of the community wedded to the values of the community. The challenge then becomes, how do you design a rule that doesn't discriminate against Airbnb tenants? You can't have a rule that says residents year-round, year-round residents can create noise at midnight because their neighbors can go ask them to quiet down, and there's a good relationship there and it works. But students who are only here nine months a year can't. You have to have a rational way of ensuring that the police have a tool that applies to everyone equally. The council had its deliberations, and the rule that the council came down on was, you can't do the list of things that is in the ordinance, public urination, public drunkenness, use of illegal drugs. You can't do these things that are disruptive to a neighborhood if you've got a group going more than five, but it's a party that is the archetype here. You can't do those things past 10:00. Now, if there's illegal drug use and the police see it, they're going to make an arrest. But if there's public urination going on, that's a harder arrest to make. If you've got two witnesses and it looks like that's what's going on, and you've got 20 kids with loud music, the tool that the council gave last meeting gives the police a way to handle that problem. And the way to handle it was not a heavy hammer. It was a warning, and then if there's a second offense, a fine. I'm not saying this is a perfect tool. I think if the council wants to amend it, there's plenty of different ways to handle this, I'm sure. This was the advice of our attorney, based on the experience of a neighboring community trying to regulate in an area that does impact both property rights and civil liberties. The Solicitor's advice and the ordinance that he put together was designed to provide the police a constitutionally valid tool that tried to balance those property rights and civil liberties. If the balance isn't quite right here, then we can amend it. It can be changed. The other thing that I said the night that the council passed this is, under no circumstances is this license for our police department to act poorly. We expect good judgment from our law enforcement officers, and we will continue to expect that no matter what the council chooses to do, whether it's amend this or see how it goes going forward and proceed with the ordinance as it's been written.
There were a few, I guess being the only person that voted against it that night, I had a few concerns. One was the fact that it carried with the property for three years, which I thought was an issue in my mind. Other things I thought about were people using this for not the right purpose. And I'm not talking about law enforcement, I'm talking about you don't get along with your neighbor. You're going to call, you know, and complain, and they're going to go out there. If we had to move this, to reconsider this, I would support that, seeing that I voted against it. I think we, can't say we rushed into it, but I think we could have vetted, vetted the process a little bit better.
I was one of the prevailing voters at the February 10th meeting. And during that meeting, as we worked through the ordinance, it seemed like the appropriate thing to do, considering the complaints we've been getting over time. However, subsequent to that meeting, I've spoken with a lot of residents, and this ordinance appears to be getting a lot of pushback from the general public in South Kingstown. And this is something that hasn't been in place ever before here, so this is, you know, something new and something that will have an impact on people. But many concerns are around the ambiguity of the language within the ordinance, as well as the ability to affect the daily activities of people in town. I certainly stand for repealing this in its entirety and directing the staff to do a further study and come back to the council at a later date for consideration of a new ordinance potentially. But in regards to this, I am definitely in for, you know, repeal in its entirety and, you know, go from there.
So, Rob, you made a good point during the work session that perhaps the way we do ordinances can be changed or should be changed to maybe a first reading and a second reading, and it would give the public more opportunity to comment before an ordinance is passed. So, my big reason for voting in favor of this was, we heard as the council that it was a pretty good tool for the police to be able to intervene and allow people to enjoy their property who were given that, had that right taken away from them. And we have acknowledged that our police have to use good judgment when they apply it. And, I mean, everything that I've seen says our, our police staff uses good judgment. So, I certainly would go along with the council if they wanted to tweak this thing, if you want to repeal it and then come back. But I think that there needs to be something in place because we heard from a number of community members who are having their right to enjoy their property taken away by an abutter. And it's a fine line, right? Whatever we do is going to be imperfect. But again, I, I heard that the police were challenged and could use this tool, and I trust them to use good judgment in applying it. So, I support the ordinance. I could be open to either modifying that ordinance or repeal, as, as long as we come back to the table. And again, maybe we have two readings and give the public more opportunity. Thank you.
So, I voted in favor of the amendment, the amendments last session. We... We put some amendments on what was presented to us to limit the time that the sanctions could be imposed on either residents or businesses between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. I feel that the police will use the ordinance judiciously. I don't anticipate that they will be overzealous. This ordinance will not affect your barbecue at 3:00 in the afternoon. It will affect you if you're keeping your neighbors up at 11:00 p.m. or midnight. The police will have the ability to come to your home and say, "You're too loud. We're giving you a warning to quiet down so your neighbors next door can sleep." I don't think, I don't think your civil liberties as a perpetrator may be of the noise can infringe upon my civil liberties to have a peaceful night. Again, we're butting heads. Whose liberties are stronger, right? Do I have a right to make noise, or do I have a right to not have to hear it? That's the question. I voted in favor because I think the police will be able to use this as a tool to keep the peace. If that proves not to be the case, and we have people coming before us complaining that they've been targeted, that they feel that this has been unfair, then I am open to looking to amend it or repeal it. But right now, I think the police and the townspeople that live here need some help in being able to have a good night's sleep and not have to worry about what's happening next door.
Deb, I agree with the idea of the good night's sleep. One example that I would bring is, for instance, it happened one day when I was at home. My neighbor who has an easement through my property was having a party for their daughter for their graduation, as an example. I had no issues with it, but then I was surprised that two or three patrol cars showed up. And they, I went out and talked to them, and they were waiting for a specific time to happen before they, you know, went in and talked to the folks. My concern is that I think carrying with that particular property, a warning or a fine, I think affects a number of things that probably have unintended consequences. But I also see the problem with having a party house next to you as well. So I see both sides. I just think that we, I think we needed some more input from the community regarding this, better understanding. You know, we say, "Well, our police department's not going to really enforce this." We can say that now, but we can't say that in two years when there's a different council or a different manager on, up here. So I think there's definitely things that we need to think about.
Shudder the thought. I will say this. No matter who's in charge of the police department or town administration or town council positions, the constraint on the police is built into the system. The police cannot violate people's civil liberties. If they do so, they subject us to lawsuits and they subject themselves to sanctions. It's, it's possible that people violate other people's civil rights and we get sued. But the police department is keenly aware, as we have recently seen in South Kingstown, that that's a fine line, and they try very hard not to go there, not because I'm leaning on them to do the right thing or because Chief Jabber is leaning on them to do the right thing, but because they grew up knowing that the right thing is not to take people's civil liberties away. Our law enforcement officers don't do this because we're watching. They abide by the law because they've sworn an oath to do so. It's not, it's not just us. It really is the case that our law enforcement officers do the right thing because it's ingrained in them.
Thanks, Rob. So has this ordinance been enforced at all since we've enacted it? Just if you know.
No.
If I may, I'd just like to report, I was recently in contact with the town's Assistant Solicitor for Prosecutions, Terry Simpson. He contacted our office today because the chief had asked him to develop, to work with the Solicitor's Office in developing a policy for them to follow regarding enforcement of this ordinance. So I told Attorney Simpson today, number one, hold off on that because of the discussion that we plan to have tonight. And my second piece of advice was, we'll obviously work with him in developing such a policy, but the first step for us would be the Narragansett Police Department. Because, again, to my understanding, that ordinance has more or less worked effectively in that town.
Thank you. I mean, I'm sympathetic to Deb's point of view. I think that we put a lot of consideration into passing this ordinance, and it took a good deal of time at the last meeting, and it came about as a result of ongoing complaints that we've been receiving for years. So it seems to me premature to just repeal it without seeing what its impact will be when it's enforced. And the truth is that it might not need to be enforced very frequently at all. Part of the point of the ordinance is to act as a deterrent to these parties. Certainly, the warning itself should act as a deterrent if it gets to that point. And I do, I would echo the sentiments up here that the police department knows how to enforce an ordinance like this reasonably. So I, you know, at this point, I'm not in favor of opening up the ordinance before it's even had a chance to do any work. So I'm happy to entertain people's thoughts on this ordinance. Again, just come up to the podium, state your name.
Hey there. My name is Rachel Cloud, and I will try my best. I know you have that three-minute rule, but I've got a lot to say. I don't believe in waiting until there's a problem before we relook at this. And I commend you, Rory, for coming back and saying this might need another look. I think a few times to go over these things before just implementing them are a really good idea. I'd like to start by saying I'm certainly sympathetic to anyone who's living next door to these houses. I, myself, live next door to one, as I wrote in my letter. It happens. The party next door to me goes on for a week, at least. You know, what do I do? I close my window. I turn on some white noise. I do what I can. My daughter lives next to an Airbnb, so I'm not unsympathetic. I was able to have a nice conversation with Chief Jabber, who I have the utmost respect for. And I said to him, you know, "I was asked by a council member to come here with a solution," you know, "which isn't my job, but here I am." So I said to him, "What can you do?" I was told you need something to give the police forth, more teeth. They need something to shut these parties down. Improper conduct. The police can charge them with improper conduct. Give them notice, and they would then have to go to district court. They would pay a fine or serve jail time. That would shut down a party. That's our law. That sounds a lot better than this subjective ordinance that you, I appreciate the faith you have in our police force. I certainly do. I do, too. A lot of them I went to school with, nothing but respect. But you're not going to tell me it's out of the realm of possibility that we couldn't get a rogue police officer that has some bad day or bad mood or something and is like, "I'm going to shut them down." The other part of this I would like answered by one of the council people that voted for this without asking the Solicitor or the town manager, is to explain the ordinance. So the first time you get a warning, second time is 250, third time is 500. It stays with the property for three years. So, okay, they've come to my house. I've had five people over. We're sitting by the fire. We're drinking wine. Police comes in like, "These middle-aged women are out of control." So they warn me because there's, you know, okay, we're rambunctious. Now they come back, 250. All right, sorry, girls, go home. All right? Six months later, I have another party. Answer me this. Am I now at 500, or do I get another warning? I don't get another warning, I go straight to 500. So now they come back, so two years, all right? I haven't had wine with my friends by the fire for two years, but we're doing it again. 500 bucks, no warning now. Wow. My son's home, he decides to have a party. He doesn't know his mother with her drinking friends were warned. It's, it opens itself up to racism, sexism, ageism, every ism there is.
All right.
It does, because it's subjective. I'm sorry, Abel.
If that was the animus of a police officer, they would be liable for lawsuits.
No, the town of South Kingstown would be liable. The town of South Kingstown would be opening it up. The other thing I would love-
Which is why they would not be doing it.
Yeah, well, okay. The other thing I would like to hear is ever a discussion about this without the urinating on the lawn? What does that even have to do with it? The town manager twice tonight said the urinating on the lawn. You can't go peeing on someone's lawn. There's a law for that. And whether you do it drunk or sober, you can't pee on a lawn. You can't do it. I understand that when there's a party next door, absolutely. I understand you as a council, you want to get ahead of it. Narragansett's cracking down, we better crack down harder so they don't move here. I get it. This isn't the answer. Narragansett's ordinance might work for Narragansett. It doesn't work for South Kingstown. Two different entities. We don't have a municipal court. And I really oppose to the fact that if I want to appeal my warning or my $250 fine, there's one person. I go to the town manager, judge and jury of South Kingstown. No, thank you. Because I'm going to tell you, if you come to my house and tell me I'm too rowdy with my friends in my backyard, which now is going to also have chickens, I sue the town. Absolutely. Same with the property for three years is no good. It's not, this ordinance doesn't work in this town. Have the police crack down on them. Improper conduct. Send them to jail. Thank you.
If I can just make a couple of comments. This is a civil ordinance, not a criminal ordinance, right, that we passed? So there's no jail involved in what we passed. There is jail involved in improper conduct, right? So we were not looking at this as criminal behavior. We were looking at this as a civil infraction. Also, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Susan Jacobson. I live 64 Indian Run Trail, which is Indian Lake. We certainly have many weekly renters, and I've got a wonderful noisy neighbor. And so I can, I can understand the intention behind a noise ordinance or a disorderly ordinance. This ordinance, however, I think is problematic in a lot of ways. It seems sort of arbitrary, this idea of five. You can have two really disorderly people keeping me up all night long. I certainly have lived that story. I'm sure a lot of other people have lived that story. At Indian Lake, we also hear gunshot seven days a week, 365 days a year. Boom, 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 constantly. And I know that that's been taken up by the council. And I think we need to find a resolution to that that doesn't infringe on people's enjoyment of target practice. I certainly have shotguns at targets in my life. I enjoy that. But on the other side of the lake, you know, particularly when the leaves are down at this time of year, it's a noise problem. My concern about all of these beyond a civil liberties issue and a libertarian kind of culture in our community that I think we want to continue, that I'm free to have chickens, I don't like chickens, my neighbor has chickens, that's great, he gives me eggs, that's wonderful. My other neighbor, you know, has wonderful parties and invites the whole neighborhood and, you know, maybe, maybe some people don't like that. I think that there's that issue. But beyond that, my deepest concern is around disproportionate enforcement. And I think it's, I think it's a lofty ideal to think that people won't be racist because they know that that would A) be wrong and B) that that would be illegal. But I think that most of us, I think most council members certainly are familiar with implicit bias and unconscious bias and racism. And so this idea that we have an ordinance that allows us to target certain properties over and over again for escalating penalties without any kind of, you know, court or judicial process or due process is concerning to me. I think it means that not only could law enforcement that might have more of a surveillance presence in certain neighborhoods than others, I've spoken to my concern about the increased surveillance in our public housing communities. If you have a community that has a higher level of surveillance, you have a community that's also likely to have a higher level of enforcement, I think you may also have a situation where complaints from some neighbors are taken more seriously than complaints from other neighbors. And that's not to say that that's in any, that's not any disrespect to our law enforcement officers, you know, whom I work with very closely professionally, and they are consummate professionals, and I have seen how good they are at their job. But we are all vulnerable to implicit bias. And the moment we think that we're not going to because, you know, we're going to be held accountable, I think we're in danger. I think there's a better solution.
To your comment, the other day, I went out and bought my wife a new car, and they asked, they saw that I was interested in the car, but I wasn't looking for anything. They said, "Why don't you take it home for the weekend?" And I did, and I threw my plate on it, which is legal. In a neighboring town, I was driving and got pulled over. And I got pulled over, when I got pulled over, it wasn't because I was speeding or anything. It was that my plates didn't match. But at the same time, why did you run my plates? I let it go, but I mean, that's to your point, that it does happen and people don't want to talk about it.
If I may approach you guys. It miffed me that we're here tonight when our forefathers gave us this. And you sit here and say it's legal and you ran it by, but you keep referring to Narragansett ordinance. You don't talk about this ordinance and its legality, okay? The Narragansett ordinance has houses that are tagged with orange stickers. Is that correct? I'm addressing, all right? So there is a big difference of this ordinance versus the Narragansett ordinance?
Not in the most important and critical provision for determining legality, in my opinion, which is the definition itself of what constitutes a public nuisance. Some members of the public have criticized that as vague, and they're, of course, entitled to their opinion. Again, the reviewing court found that it was, on its face, constitutional. And in my opinion, the fact that the ordinance this town adopted does not contain the actual sticker provision doesn't change my opinion, our opinion, as to the legality of that operative part of the ordinance.
The ordinance is different here. We don't have the sticker. But we say that the First District has appealed or held up the sticker in Narragansett. Well, we've got two different ordinances going on here, number one. Listen, you can, you know, you can call purple, you can call red, whatever you want to call it, they still have a sticker ordinance. They're tagging the specific property, or they're making the owners of the rental property or whatever, or after multiple calls, they get the house tagged, right? Isn't that the way it works over in Narragansett? All right. So do the people that own the house get a warning the first time? The second time, what happens in Narragansett versus this ordinance? The second time, what happens in Narragansett versus this ordinance?
The procedure is basically the same, except that Narragansett has a municipal court. I think it's important for the council to realize, one, I think this was passed with the understanding of all involved, that we are, the town is pursuing legislation that would grant us the authority to establish our own municipal court. I think it's fair to say an ordinance like this will much better be handled and enforced in a municipal court. In the absence of a municipal court, the town has to enforce this through district court. As an ordinance violation, it is more in the nature of a criminal ordinance versus civil, even though, right, jail time is not something that's on the table remotely here, remotely on the table, whether it's municipal court or district court. But I think it's important to realize that no matter where it would be enforced, municipal or district, there is an appeal process that would not end with the town manager. If this ordinance were to be enforced in district court, there would be a right of appeal to the Superior Court. And if this ordinance were enforced in municipal, same thing. So the process would not end with one step.
So to answer your question very specifically, the difference is the fine in Narragansett, it's higher and there's a yellow, an orange sticker.
The house gets tagged, we understand that.
Here, there is an orange sticker.
Okay.
And the fine is lower at the initiation.
Let me back up 10 paces. We're all taught, you know, good fences make good neighbors, right? The first thing they tell you is, right, hey, you buy a house, you know, you don't want to have any problems, you put a fence up. I understand and I'm sympathetic towards the fact that people have college kids or whatever living next to them. I am sympathetic towards that. But I feel this is an invasion. If I want five or eight people at my house at 10 o'clock at night, and I live out off of Gravelly Hill Road, and I've got an overzealous neighbor who decides to call the cops, I get a warning? And then to boot, my house is tagged for three years?
So only if you engage in the public nuisance. Again, unlawful conduct, excessive noise, traffic, obstruction of public streets by crowds or traffic by vehicles, illegal parking, public drunkenness, public urination, the service of alcohol to minors, fights, disturbances of the peace, or litter. If you're doing those things at 10 o'clock at night, and your neighbor's quiet enjoyment of their property, their constitutional right to property is being disrupted, then the police can go and give you a warning, yes?
I understand that, but when did my property become public?
Your property is not public.
Well, that's what you're saying, I'm public.
No, 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 no. You're at the point where you're beginning to spill noise into your neighbor's private property, a warning will be issued at 10 o'clock if these other things are evidenced by the police officer. They go out--
So I get my warning, and the second time they come, and like Rachel said, I get a $250 fine. So in two years, I go to sell my house, and all of a sudden it's tagged because I'm a trouble house. Is that what you're doing? Yes, that's what you're doing.
The ordinance says that--
I'm going to love, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm going to wait for the first time the cops come, because I'm going to sue your ass. I guarantee it, all right? And it's not going to hold up, believe me, because I've already talked, and I know you're an attorney, I know you're an attorney. And you get your sticker little thing over in Narragansett, this thing doesn't have any teeth to it. I've already had several lawyers look at this. All right, good night.
Anybody else would like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Jocelyn Wescott, Mattoonik in East Mattoonik. I'm a landlady in Mattoonik, 11 years, not one complaint. And the reason is because I spent time over at URI, working with them, understanding the process. I meet face to face with every student group, and I tell them, and this year I told them, "You live near the town council president. Don't get, I don't want to hear about this. You need to revisit this, you need to look at it again, you need to bring in URI, you need to bring in some landlords, you need to bring in some renters, you need to bring in some residents, and you need to form a committee." There is teeth to this, it's important to control noise. Five is silly. I'm a family of eight now, do I leave the babies home in New York? What do I do with my family? We're eight of us. And little kids are noisy, if you remember. We need to bring this back, we need to reel it back a little bit, form some committees, have some discussions, talk. Talk to experienced landlords who can tell you how we control. Maybe our out-of-state landlords need a little firmer hand, maybe they need a little more direction. Our in-town landlords could perhaps form some kind of a group. But this isn't quite ready yet. And I would urge you strongly, reel it back, form a committee, form a study, volunteering right away. I've been a very successful landlady. I owned 11 units total. Never a complaint, not one. So please, I would ask you to reel it back, thank you.
Hi, my name is Colleen Roach. I went to URI, left for a long time, and then finally, after like nearly 20 years, came back. I love it here. I'm super happy to raise my kids here. I do feel like this is a bit of a reach. Five people seems very arbitrary. I would be happier, I'm an engineer, I'd be much happier if there was some sort of sound level associated with the noise. At least that's something that you can't really fake, or I guess you could, but there'd be some kind of standard for what that civil liberty kind of invasion was. But as it stands now, it's really vague, and I do fear that it would be unequally used throughout our town. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, just as a way of explanation, the reason there is a number, and, you know, five is just a number, it's not a magic number, it's just a number, is because in order to be constitutionally valid, we have to be specific in defining what a public nuisance is. It's true that a specific noise level would be a perfectly valid way to identify what is prohibited. Unfortunately, maintaining the equipment, the certifications, the training to be able to go out and do noise tests is very cost prohibitive. You have to have officers who are trained in how to use the equipment, and they have to go out and use the equipment. It has to be calibrated regularly, otherwise you're not going to have an effective prosecution based on the tests that were done in the field. The ordinance was designed to identify that conduct that is prohibited. Again, it's that illustrative list. If five or more people, already we've got a limit, the thing that's prohibited is a party. It's not a big party, but it's a party. And then all of this other conduct has to be going on. So we've identified a number that is a trigger point in the activities that have to be engaged in in order for there to be a public nuisance. So five, again, it's not a magic number, but it's not the case that all gatherings of five are going to trigger a violation of the public nuisance provision. You could have 500 family members making noise at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and this is not triggered. You can have 500 family members at 10 o'clock at night, and so long as everybody in the neighborhood is not being disturbed, there's no violation. It's the number plus the offending conduct that is the violation of the public nuisance provision.
I appreciate that, because I've got more than five people in my family, too. And the cops have never been called on me, and I anticipate that they won't be called on me for the kids raising their voices. And if the cops were called on me and my family, and they showed up, and they wanted to stop us from making our family noise, I think that they would be reasonable and probably not give me a warning. My guess is that they would treat other families the same way. So I think, well, we need to step back, we need to step back from these hypotheticals that are causing a lot of anxiety in this room. We need to think about the way that this is actually going to be enforced. This is for parties up near URI where people are behaving in ways that severely impact their neighbors. These are the people that we've heard from, these are the people that we've been trying to, you know, accommodate through the ordinance change. If it turns out that the ordinance is abused, and it's not applied to the people that we intended it to be applied to, then we can come back, amend it, say we change it from five down to two, or say we totally repeal it, but that's the time when we'll know if this ordinance does or does not make sense.
The only thing I would add to that, I still struggle with the opinion, in terms of opinion of noise level. I understand that it's difficult for us to have people qualified to measure, but some people's opinion of noise, for example, my wife hates the way I chew, and it bothers her all the time. But that's just who I am, I'm not going to change it, you know, she can either stay or leave, but, you know, just kidding. But seriously, I mean, that's, certain things bother people in different ways. Just like a police officer is human, certain things might bother that particular police officer in certain ways, and another police officer might not care what, you know, it's just the way human nature is. So that's one of the things I struggle with, but I really do struggle still with the having kind of the badge on the property that I talked about initially as to why I didn't vote for it.
There's a couple of things that I've heard tonight that I think are potential improvements to the ordinance. I think that the badge, the three-year look back, is an important concept because it says to the landlord, "You're responsible for how your property gets used. You can't be in Long Island and pretend that the problem doesn't exist, you've got to deal with it, you've got to be engaged." So I think that some ability to make sure that landlords can't just roll over into a new tenant with a new academic year and say, "Yep, clean slate now and I'm good." I think that there has to be some mechanism that keeps the landlord engaged. We have a reason to incentivize the selection of good tenants. We have a reason to engage landlords in the kind of behavior that we've heard described by a landlord here tonight. Our problem isn't the good landlords, our problem is the bad landlords, the ones who aren't letting their tenants know that they have to abide by reasonable behavior or engage in reasonable behavior. I've also, so I think that that piece is an interesting one. The noise piece is clearly a challenge. And perhaps something as simple as saying "noise and" as opposed to "noise or" this list of behaviors. We've got an excessive noise or public urination or public drunkenness or, you know, it's that. Perhaps some connectivity between the noise and the other underlying offensive behaviors is an improvement to the ordinance. To be honest with you, I don't know that a change in the number is a big impact point. I don't know that it changes much, because we're going to have situations where there are unruly gatherings of two. That's going to be the case. The question is, where do you want to get serious about intervention? Is it going to be the couple that's always arguing, and you can hear them through the walls? Or are we really sort of aiming at the behaviors that are in the list of public nuisance? Those behaviors aren't really happening when you don't have gatherings. So whether it's five or 10, you know, is a subject open to debate, I suppose, but you need to give the police some measure. They need to know that this is a big enough thing that it triggers the ordinance. And then with regard to judicial process, believe me, I have no interest in being the arbiter of whether or not a fine should stick. We need to have a final administrative officer who determines whether or not the fine sticks. We could, if we had a municipal court, we could stick that in the municipal court, and the judge gets to decide. We don't have a municipal court at this point, so there has to be an administrative officer in our form of government, that's the town manager. I have no qualm with that being the judge in a municipal court. And as soon as we've got a municipal court, an amendment of the ordinance to do that, to make that change, is perfectly appropriate.
I think we talk about, say, affordable housing in our town, and one of the key components is being able to rent a property in town, and I think this kind of affects that in a way in terms of, if I'm a landlord, like I mentioned last time around, I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that we vet the tenants properly. At some point, you might have to get rid of the tenant, and that's an eviction process. But I can't guarantee that if I do all of my due diligence, that the next person won't have a party with, you know, a certain number of people that triggers some event that I have no control over. You know, I was happy when we moved the ordinance with a time period from 10:00 PM, or happier, I guess, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and I believe that everyone deserves to be able to enjoy their property peacefully. But at the same time, I just think that there's too many what-ifs and different scenarios that this law could be used in. And I know that we're not planning on doing it or using it that way, but there are no guarantees that it won't be used in a different way in the future.
Well, there is a guarantee. I mean, I don't mean to push back on this too hard, but all of this has to be done within a legal and constitutional framework. We can't arbitrarily apply the law. We can't discriminatorily apply the law. If a law enforcement officer in South Kingstown were to use this ordinance, and we can show that this law enforcement officer was using this ordinance to discriminate against women or to discriminate against minorities, we'd have a problem. We'd be sued effectively. People would succeed in suing the town for discriminatory enforcement. Now, the assistant solicitor has described the Narragansett public nuisance definition as passing constitutional muster on its face. The other part of that is it also has to pass constitutional muster in its application. And knowing how not to violate the constitutional strictures is part of what our professional police department is trained and is constantly being reinforced to do. It's not the case that they can act arbitrarily, it's not the case that they can act discriminatorily. And if they do, they're outside the rules, they're beyond the rules, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And yes, it is always the case that people can violate rules, but at that point, there's a method for bringing them back into the rules. We fire people who are discriminating against people. We fire people who are voiding people's constitutional rights. It's not the case that they can act arbitrarily because this rule allows them to do that. It does not allow them to do that.
Personally, I just don't see the downside of repealing this in its entirety and bringing it back at a future date where we have more study on it. I think part of the public feels that we've rushed this to an extent. People feel that this happened, we voted on it, and they were unaware of it at the time. So now we're kind of trying to reverse this to an extent or bring further conversation with the public here to ask questions. You know, clearly, there's opposition publicly for this ordinance that's been enacted, and I don't see any problem or any trouble in repealing this in its entirety, directing staff to do further study, coming back to the council, working in collaboration with the community to get something that works for everybody. I understand that what we're putting in place is to target complaints that have been occurring, but if this is going to sacrifice the well-being and daily activities of, you know, regular people in town, that is not something that we should be in support of. I think there's no downside to bringing this back, repealing it in its entirety, studying it more, and coming up with a solution that works for the town at large.
Counselor, I'm not opposed to any rule the council wants to put in place, and please don't mistake my comments tonight as support for this or any other provision. All I'm suggesting is that doing something that is going to prevent disruption of people's quiet enjoyment is going to require a balancing, and somebody's going to lose something that right now they've got. The folks who live in houses where they can party very loudly late at night are going to have to stop doing that. And the landlords who have those properties and are collecting rents and don't have to screen their tenants-- screen their tenants with fear of losing to a fine are going to lose their position. There's going to be a balance and somebody wins and somebody loses. If this rule isn't what the council wants, we'll change it. You change, you've got every legal authority to change the rule, to decide what the rule is. As far as staff study, the staff went out and studied. The solicitor's office looked for a constitutionally valid public nuisance rule, and this is the rule that they came back with. The police department looked at the rules available and decided this was a rational approach to the problem. If we were tasked with going out and finding another rule, I don't know that we would find a better public nuisance definition. Again, I think there are provisions in here that can be changed that may make this more appropriate to South Kingstown, but I don't think that we're going to find a better framework within which to deal with this. The framework that was put forth here is designed to make sure that property owners don't take more from their neighbors than they have the right to. It's a framework that says if you're renting property to a tenant, you got to make sure that the tenant doesn't keep your neighbors up all hours of the night. It's based on conduct that is clear and specific, and that's what's required under, under the case law. We have to be clear enough so that a regular, normal human being could know what they're not allowed to do. And what they're not allowed to do is that list that I keep going through. They're not allowed to be publicly drunken, making noise, et cetera, et cetera.
I think one thing, I think one thing that would help the council and the public is if we were to request some numbers from Narragansett on the enforcement, numbers and also, what's the word I'm looking for? Non-numerical data such as, you know, have complaints been filed against individual police officers or the town for improper enforcement? I think getting some data from our neighboring community to put some numbers on how well it has been working would be one thing that could help our understanding of how this could potentially work out for South Kingstown.
Did you have a comment, Joe?
No, I'll hear some more.
Ms. Cloud, you've been waiting.
If I may, I warned you the first time. I didn't think three minutes was enough. The, the list of things you say, you know, a lot of loud noise, a lot of people, obstruction of traffic, you know, certainly rowdy people, noise and commotion. You're describing Fourth of July, and I live on Columbia Street. So as the perpetrators of that event, consider yourself warned because I don't get to sleep. So you're fined. You know, that, it's ridiculous, but that's what it is. I can't leave my house on Fourth of July. I'm trapped. My road is gridlocked. I've never complained because we all know I like a party. So that's okay. But if I didn't, and if I wanted to go to bed, it wouldn't be possible. Think about it. The other thing that hasn't been brought up is this ordinance affects our businesses. And if you think it doesn't, you're wrong. Our businesses are open till 1:00 AM. 10:00 PM is too early. You're going to, you're going to be out on a deck, you're going to be having a drink with more than five friends, hopefully, and you could be fined? There's all these little rentals right around Mattoonik Oyster Bar. What if they call the police? Too much noise going on there? It's ridiculous. To impose this on our businesses and our residents is ludicrous. It absolutely needs to be relooked at. It doesn't fit for South Kingstown. I'm going to grant you, it may be legal. It is not right in our town, and we won't have it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deb Burgner. I appreciate that you're willing, at least some of you, to rehear this ordinance. I feel like we could really weaponize our neighbors. I want to tell you that the police have come to my house because we were burning and we had to provide our burn permit. We always get that, but somebody called and we provided it. So I know that this is going to happen. We sit on our deck, there's, the way our deck is, we're on the second level, we are going to carry that noise. And that's at 10 o'clock on a summer night. I can imagine that that's going to happen. And I feel like we're creating something that's going to put neighbor against neighbor. My neighbors call when we burn, they will call, they will call if we're sitting out. They've called my husband at 11:30 to say, hey, your, your daughter is on the deck. And we're like, yep, there's three of them there. And, and I'm a family of five. I'm going to have guests. This is kind of ridiculous. And I also think about the timing of this. In the summer, we're all outside. Right now, most of us are inside, except for today. But we're, we're sitting outside and I can only imagine that we're going to be wasting the police time because my neighbor is calling to complain. I guarantee you, he will call. I hear him, he's doing the very same thing. We don't call, but he will call if we breathe outside. So you're creating, you're knowing, I'm knowing this is going to happen. Do you want the police at my house or do you want the police at the accident on Route One? Do you want the police going to some real crime? Or do you want them telling, telling the Burgners to take it inside at 10:40? I mean, it's not even reasonable. 10 o'clock on a weekend is not unreasonable in the summer. The fireworks will, won't even start until nine. If people go back or go somewhere else, this doesn't make any sense. I just want you to think about some of the instances in the summer. That's where you want to put your police focused on the neighbors having a drink in their backyard or sitting at their fire. I just think this is way, way bigger. I'm listening to the woman who can't use her yard for a chicken because the chickens have pooped in it, and you're caring, you're caring about other things. I don't really, I don't get it. It's, I just want you to think about, it's going to happen. Neighbors, we've already know that neighbors don't like neighbors, and this is going to happen, and this is what you're creating. I understand you're thinking it's about landlords and all of this with the police being ethical. My neighbors will call because they're already calling about other things. So just think about that, that that's, I want you to pause and think about coming to July and how many calls we're going to get because everybody's got one of those neighbors.
If I may for one minute, I might have a solution.
I need to say something. I don't want to alarm people, but people can already call the police on you if you're having a big party with or without this ordinance. 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock. If it hasn't been happening to this point, I don't think this ordinance is going to inspire people to do it more. The point of the ordinance is where it has been happening to allow the police to have an enforcement mechanism that will stop the behavior.
I, I agree with you wholeheartedly on, on that aspect, but let's, let's, let's take this one step further. Instead of the whole town suffering from this ordinance, isn't there a way that we can get the rental houses tagged or listed as rental houses? And then the ordinance appeals to that house instead of picking on every neighbor in the town? Isn't, isn't this, it's done in Providence, it's done around all the college communities? Why can't we do that here? And if the people, so demographically, if, if you've got somebody up on URI and their, their complaint is well-founded, then whoever owns the house has to list the house to the town as a rental house. All right, then they're subject to, to whatever you guys deem punishable. All right, absentee landlord or whatever else like that. All right? I think there's more fearlessness than that, than, than taking it out on everybody else in the town. People are afraid. People are afraid to have a party in the backyard. Look what we've done to ourselves. Right? We're all good people here. We're all met here tonight because none of this makes any sense to us. But, but the problem is a select few of rental houses and unruly people coming to town. So why don't we address that issue and look at that and say, you know what? You're going to rent houses in South Kingstown, you're going to register it with the town. And if, if your family's going to use it, then you pull back your rental receipt and say, my family's in it from this time to this time. I, I think that's an easy solution. Charge the landlords a fee for the ordinance or whatever else you're going to do and monitor it that way. Thoughts?
So we can, of course, require rental properties to register. But the registration of rental properties has to be tied to something around the property's safety, around the property's inspection, around, we can't require them to register so that we can discriminatorily enforce public nuisance rules against their occupants. That we cannot do.
Why?
Because the Constitution says we can't discriminate based on arbitrary.
The Constitution says you can come to my house after 10 o'clock at night? That's what you're telling me? And my house becomes public property? If these people are opening up their house to a public domain and renting it out, all right, the people out of town or whatever else like that, then they're subject to a different set of standards. All right? Even though they're all human beings, don't get me wrong, it's, and it's not, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is if you rent the house out, all right, and you rent it out to 22 guys who are having a bachelor party, all right, and, and they ruin the neighborhood and wipe the house off, then somebody's got to be held culpable for that. All right? We agree, we agree for that. All right? That as a neighbor, all right, there's 22 guys, you, you're hitting on the urinating on the front lawn. I mean, that's, you know, whether it's urinating on the front lawn or throwing beer bottles over the fence or whatever else like that, how do we address the absentee landlord? What, he gets a ticket in the mail? Okay? And, and then what? A $500 fine, then what goes from there?
That's what this ordinance did.
No, no, I'm just saying, where does it go after $500 fine? Because this guy just might build it right in. My, my point is, is if we, if we, if we make the landlords pay a fee upfront or charge them somehow or another and, and work on an audience that way that they have to list the house as a rental for the town and agree to a certain set of bylaws, I think we're all better off. Then you're not, not attacking everybody else's civil rights. We can't do that? Can do that? You're lawyers, figure it out.
There are a few different ideas embodied in this gentleman's suggestion. So one is the idea of simply a registration ordinance, which is something we can certainly adopt. I believe Narragansett's rental registration ordinance was intended to assist enforcement not only of this, but of the unrelated persons provision of the zoning ordinance. That's a discussion, I hope, for another night. The other suggestion goes beyond just registration because with a registration ordinance, we could only impose an administrative fee to cover costs of town, you know, keeping the list maintained. We couldn't impose a $500 registration fee upfront for all rentals. Again, that would, that would go to discriminatory treatment of rentals versus dwellings owned outright. So there are a couple of different ideas in there. There are, you know, there are a number of tools intended to help law enforcement address this issue. This ordinance is one potential tool. There are others that are already in the toolbox. And if you direct us to, we certainly can provide a more comprehensive report to the council on all of the available tools.
One thing I would be interested in seeing is how Narragansett's ordinance has been applied to commercial businesses. I mean, I think.
I'll speak without 100% knowledge on this, but that ordinance does not apply to commercial businesses. You can't take a business, well, you can take a business to municipal court in some circumstances. You can't under this ordinance, under South Kingstown's ordinance or under Narragansett's ordinance. It's written to apply to individuals, occupants and owners of real property, not to commercial properties.
Okay. When, when we were discussing the ordinance, I thought that it was said that we could, had to apply it to both residential and commercial. So I would like clarification on that.
That's exactly why I'm standing here too. You know, I, you guys did say business in the beginning and my name's Lenny Kowko. I'm the owner of Extreme Airsoft. I own it with my wife Danielle. And the, the question that we had is we're in an industrial building, which I believe is exempt from noise ordinance altogether. I believe an industrial building can run 24 hours a day with no hangups at all with the town or, or noise, but we literally have houses right next door to us. So then again, as we run till midnight and pretty much every kid in town is leaving at night, are we still held to these same rules? Like, does this apply to us? Because we're in an industrial building already that I believe doesn't even have a noise ordinance.
Yeah. I don't like to be in the position of contradicting the solicitor, especially when he's on vacation, but I have to contradict him in this instance. This ordinance will not apply to commercial businesses.
All right. Answered my question. The other thing, I grew up in Narragansett and I think what you guys keep saying, like rentals in Narragansett, I believe, and I'm not 100% certain, but I believe that the rental houses in Narragansett are held to a higher tax bracket than standard houses because of they have the task force that as soon as the college kids arrive, they smash them as soon as they make noise, opening night. We have, my wife and I have some friends that are Narragansett police.
I ran the Narragansett Chamber of Commerce for a number of years. And the town of Narragansett does have a two-tier tax rate. One is residential and one is commercial. But they do, the second tier, the 1.5% of the residential rate does not apply to rental properties.
Like I said, I had no idea, but I thought like those, the college houses that were like pétisquams at like shores were held where they're just meat markets of kids. But all righty.
Do you pay the same tax rate as residential properties?
So Mr. President, I'm going to add to my list of suggestions that I think might improve this ordinance. I do think that clarifying language around commercial exclusion would be an improvement because my reading of, of the ordinance doesn't have that exemption. The person liable is any person who owns or manages property on which a public nuisance occurs. There's no designation of zoning classification. Any person who organizes, hosts, sponsors, permits, or suffers the occurrence of an event constituting a public nuisance is a liable person. If we main to exclude commercial, I'd like to see language that is clear on that point.
So on that note, I think just the fact that there's a conflict between the solicitors and everybody on that subject alone, you have to revisit this. They can't even decide amongst each other what's right, what's wrong, how this is to be enforced. Another thing I wanted to say about this ordinance was the shortcomings of it, to me, seem to be, we're arguing on the one hand, well, we can't, we don't have a noise ordinance or, or decibel level, and it's too hard to train the police or to supply them with the right equipment and calibrate it. But you're losing, you're leaving it to the police's judgment and their audio sensibilities to make a decision about what's too loud. On that note, you might have neighbors who are very sensitive to noise. I happen to have some myself. I live on five acres in the middle of 80 acres, and if we're just sitting around a fire, five or six of us, playing an acoustic guitar and talking on a Saturday night in the summer, we're getting 911. We have a little fire pit, we're having a fire, we're getting 911 because there's smoke. Five acres in the middle of 80. So we have super sensitive neighbors, as some of you already know what I've been through with them. And so you're putting it on the police to make a judgment about who, which neighbors are right. A woman in the audience said earlier about pitting neighbors against neighbors. That's going to happen. They're going to go tit for tat. It's going to get out of hand. It's just going to get out of hand. Five people is certainly unreasonable. Most folks have five people in their own family. And yes, some people are louder than others. If I lived in an RTAN zone in town and me and my sons and a couple of our friends were over, believe me, we have loud voices. We had sensitive neighbors, they'd be calling 911. And then it's up to the police to enforce something that you're saying they, they can't even do with machines, but you're asking them to do it with their, with their ears. It's just not reasonable. It's not fair to the police. And as some other people have mentioned, they've probably got better things to do than, you know, get 911 calls every weekend from some whiny little neighbor. By the way, my neighbors are from Connecticut. They're not from here. We're locals, we grew up here. But yet our neighbors from Connecticut can have more control of what happens to us and our families and our communities. And, you know, they're the anti-fun thing. You're going to, you know, we're going to be known as an anti-fun town. South Kingstown has always been a fun town. I live in Mattoonik. In the summertime, you hear it coming from everywhere. Music, laughter, fireworks, all of it. And if you're celebrating life, that's what happens. So I don't want to become known as a town that is anti-fun, that doesn't celebrate life because a bunch of nanny news are going to come in and start wagging their finger at, at everybody. And by the way, they're all coming in from Connecticut, Massachusetts, and New York. They're the ones who are whining. Guess what? Don't move here. Don't move here. You know, you want to take sides on this, you don't have to take sides of the whining nanny news. You can take sides of the people who like to have fun, who like to whoop it up once in a while, right? Not pointing at, I'm not, not pointing at anyone in particular. But you know where I'm going with this, it's, you know, you're taking sides of the want, want, want people versus the wah, wah, wah people. And, uh, it's going to get ugly. It's going to get ugly, and people are going to use it, uh, this as a weapon, and, you know, you're saying, oh, well, we're going to enforce reasonable things like we always did. You watch, now that $500 is on the line, yeah, I just heard a, you know, a peep from my neighbor, oh, well, my heard a peep from that neighbor, and, you know, that's what's going to happen. It's going to get out of control. Five people is ridiculous. That's absolutely ridiculous. I know you have to have a, a starting point. Oh, let's start at 20, let's start at 20, maybe in 50, but five? That's a, that's a average family. So, it's, it's, uh, I don't know what else to say about this. It's just, it's crazy. Our town should not be heading in this direction. People love this town for the fact that there are still some, uh, constitutional freedoms and people enjoying themselves. And instead of squashing the, uh, people who are trying to enjoy themselves, why don't we turn this around and squash the people who don't like to have fun?
Just, just very briefly, did you pull URI in? Did you, did you consider talking to URI and talking to the student group that deals with rentals? I think what we're asking you to do is not discard this. I think, I thi- and I'm, and I'm, I should be the one standing up here going, oh my God, don't do this, but I'm in favor of this in some form. But we need to pull in URI, and we, you need to pull in stakeholders. And, and get all of us at the table and figure out what works and what doesn't work. I think it's too broadly applied to every single citizen in this town and not to the student rentals where really the heart of this problem exists. So, one more time, I would ask that you form a task force. Because I can tell you, if I get fined $500, I'm not going to the market for six months. But if the guy on Long Island gets charged $500 bucks, he ain't going to care. He's going to take that right out of the damage deposit and let it happen again, and again, and again, and again, and again. So you haven't put any teeth in this. Just, just asking you again, please, pull it back, form a task force, let's get over to URI, let's work on this in a meaningful, impactful way that makes a difference. Thanks.
I just wanted to make two additional points. So, w- I think it, I think it's totally appropriate that we have articulated such trust in our law enforcement professionals in this town, they are extraordinary. Um, but one thing is that law enforcement officers have discretion. You know, any of us who have been let off the hook for going too fast down, you know, a road in Mattoonick, um, we know that law enforcement has, have discretion. And at that point of discretion, that is the point that most studies will speak to when we talk about implicit bias and, and discriminatory actions, not intentionally discriminatory actions, but disproportionate actions by an officer or a department happen in that moment of discretion. So that's concerning to me around that idea of disproportionate enforcement. Um, the second thing is, I, I grew up on university campuses. My, my mother was a dean and a provost. I grew up, you know, of student life, so she was the chief disciplinarian. And it, I wonder how much we have talked with URI about, about this, you know? Um, I grew up on Bucknell's campus, and there was something called Town Gown, and, um, the, and, and there was campus police, which we have campus police, and campus police had a role in off-campus activities as well, much smaller university town than South Kingstown. But I wonder if there might be additional solutions. And, you know, I, I think we are different than Narragansett. Our culture is different than Narragansett. Um, the density is higher in Narragansett.
I, I just want to say that, uh, you know, our police force communicates all the time with the university police force, and we talk with them about these issues. Uh, and I would say that Narragansett also talked with URI through these issues and developing their ordinance, which this was patterned on, although ours is less stringent, of course. Um, so, and I think in Narragansett, if we want to look at what the impact of this ordinance might be, we could look at Narragansett and, and see, has it helped them or not, which is data that we can gather. Uh, but I think Narragansett, they still have parties there. It's my understanding. Um, and I think that people will still be able to have parties here in South Kingstown. And I encourage people to still continue to have the parties you've been having, assuming you haven't been having the cops called on you all the time. Uh, and see if this ordinance is as bad as all the fears out there. If it turns out that this is a gross overreach and people are being hurt by this ordinance rather than being protected, which is its intent, then we can change it. Go ahead, Joe.
Hi, I really just have a quick question. I actually came here on the chicken issue, but I'm, I'm glad that's gone. I was fully prepared to stand between anybody and my rooster. Um, I am a self-appointed crazy chicken lady. Um, and, and very proud of it, you know, and I'm really glad that my, my grandson knows where chicken, I mean, where eggs come from and, um, and, and to really just, I think, we've become such an age of just not minding our own business, you know? I really just think people need to back off from everybody. Um, I don't know when we decided we needed to live with nothing but the sound of crickets around us. Um, that's just not where we are. That's not where we live, and, um, and you need to go somewhere else for that. Um, but I had a question about this, um, this noise thing. Um, one is, if there is already a, and if I'm not mistaken, a, um, a law about disorderly conduct and, and, and all of that, why do we have the ordinance? And then the second is, so I had two of my children in the last year and a half get married in my backyard, um, and it was a wonderful, joyous thing, and I went to my neighbors before it happened to say, listen, you know, I got two weddings going to go on in my backyard, don't know how long their people are going to stay, we're providing tents for them to sleep in, you know, for anybody who wants to stay, yada, yada. And they were all fine with it, you know? Um, but so, now I, I'm hoping, I'm planning a 25th wedding anniversary party at my house, hopefully the same sort of atmosphere going on. Um, if the neighbors don't complain, but a police officer drives by and decides it's too loud, do they have the right to stop, or is this something that somebody has to call in to complain about? Those are my questions.
Yeah, somebody has to call in.
I just had a, another quick thought, and I, and I hate to beat this to death in a way, but, um, you know, as a council, we did have a Towning Gown with URI, and I felt like two weeks or three weeks, four weeks later, we put this ordinance in place, but I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, that we, did we really communicate with student affairs about this ordinance?
We did communicate with the university that the ordinance was, uh, under consideration, in fact, at that meeting.
Okay. Okay, you know, again, I don't recall the whole entire meeting, but-
It wasn't a subject of, a great deal of conversation.
Right.
They were aware of the ordinance.
And they talked about the fact that they are willing to help in any way they can in terms of off-campus issues and things like that?
It's also the case that the university sent folks down the night that we heard, um, complaints back in November.
To that property?
To the properties on, is it Berth Avenue?
Berth Avenue, yeah.
All right. Uh, so this is a discussion item, uh, only, we cannot take any action on it tonight. Um, do you have a suggestion, Rob?
So, actually, because it's a discussion item, the only action that could be taken by the council tonight is direction to staff. Um, you can't vote on a repeal, but you can tell us to go do something. We're happy to do whatever it is the council wants us to do.
I'd like to make a motion to ask the staff to, uh, re-advertise a public, or advertise a public hearing to consider the repeal of the ordinance while looking to actually, uh, either correct it or make modifications where needed.
I'll second that.
Just so we understand what you're looking for, um, they're two different and they're somewhat contradictory things. Um, repeal would mean that we have no ordinance on, uh, the books to deal with unruly crowds. Um, modification, finding another alternative, would be an amendment to the current-
Well, I guess what I'm looking for is, um, not to make that ultimate decision, but to open it back up to either repeal it at that point or make modifications. My, personally, I'd like to repeal it.
Yeah. So, in order for us to, um, we can come back with an order of public notice, and this gets to my earlier suggestion that we at some point ought to really think about a first reading and a second reading, but under the current procedures, um, that are adopted as part of the council rules, the next step in a new ordinance, and this is essentially a new ordinance because we're getting rid of this ordinance, would be, um, a notice, an order of public notice. In order for us to have something to make notice of, we have to have a sense of what we're doing. Um, what are the changes that we're going to publish? We're going to come to you next meeting with a document-
I can, I can change my motion. That's okay. Uh, my motion then would be to, uh, ask the staff to advertise a meeting where we are going to consider repealing this ordinance.
So- So what that would mean, the way we'll translate that, the way we'll take action on that, is we will come back to the council at the next meeting with a copy of this ordinance with every word stricken, with a line through every single word. That's, that's the, that's the action that we'll take if, if that resolution.
Amy, would that work?
Would it be on as an order of notice for the next meeting? Okay.
Sure.
Yeah. So, we can certainly do that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Uh, so, I think staff gave us some good suggestions tonight for amendments or to look at this, look at the three-year lookback, the noise behavior, changing number of people, um, the implementa- implementation of a municipal court, clarifying language, I mean, you guys heard them all, including URI, in the discussions. And, so, A, we haven't heard that there's an issue with this ordinance, it's brand-new, chances are fairly slim. Uh, B, in my opinion, we heard from, uh, our police administration that they needed this, so, um, I, I would be more in favor of amending, uh, than, uh, repealing. Um, certainly if there's three votes, uh, on this council, I would go forward, but I would want to be sure that we're going to look at this again soon, because, first of all, I wish you all were here two weeks ago. And second of all, other people were here who are being injured by not having this ordinance. So, it, a- again, and listen, I'm a property rights guy, but I also know that if you infringe on my right to, to enjoy my property, that's injurious as well. So if the, if the feeling on this council is to repeal, I would go along, as I said earlier, but I would want to be sure that we're going to do, we're going to take some action relatively swiftly that would satisfy all of your concerns and satisfy the people that were here two weeks ago. There needs to be sort of a blend that, that gets this done.
So, Joe, I, I would definitely support looking at it again, uh, very soon and quickly, uh, in doing a, maybe a better job at vetting it and getting more public comment from both sides at that point. Uh, but I think at the, at the present time, I think it's an ordinance that we put into place that I think personally, I mean, everyone has their own vote, and I appreciate and respect that. Uh, personally, I think it was something that we shouldn't have approved at that point. But, um, if we were to vote today to, uh, repea- oh, no, not, not vote today, vote today to give staff, uh-
Direction.
-direction to, for order of, uh, what is it called again? Order of-
Notice. Order of notice.
Um, do a potential repeal. I would be perfectly fine with that, but I also understand the other side of the equation in terms of figuring out how to handle those other issues around certain houses in our town.
And if I could add just one more comment, it certainly isn't a criticism of you folks for not being here two weeks ago, but we would have had a different ordinance if you were. And I understand that, listen, there's a notice in the newspaper, um, there's a, there's a town council agenda. Uh, listen, a lot of people don't look at any of that stuff, I get it. And then once something is done, that's when there's a reaction. So it's not a criticism of anybody here, but we, I think we would have had a much different ordinance if we had input from, from everybody two weeks ago.
So, I, I'm not interested in repealing, but I am always open to amending, and if we can make this better for everyone, then I'm, I'm interested in that. But I will vote no to have the order of notice to repeal. I will vote yes on an order of notice to revisit.
I'm going to vote no on this motion as well. Uh, I think it would be in order to have a motion to have the administration come back with a report on improvements, data from other towns that have, uh, implemented similar policies, see what the effects have been, and, uh, and definitely language, looking to clarify that distinction between commercial and residential. Um, more discussion on this motion?
Well, so having heard that there are not three votes, uh, to repeal, uh, again, my preference would be, I'm sorry.
It looks like we don't have three votes. My preference would be to-
You could, though.
Amen, rather than repeal. Um, I think that we could get a better, I know we'll get a better ordinance with, just with the input that we've had tonight. Um, so I, I will also vote no, uh, and would be in favor of amending what we have already passed. I would, it was strongly, uh, the case was strongly made to us that the police need this. So, um, I would not like to have a, a period of time where they had nothing again, so I will vote no as well.
Are you open to repealing in its entirety with the intent to come back to this with a new ordinance at a subsequent time in which we can vet out, have a new public hearing, and ultimately decide on something that is better, well-fit for this town and the community?
So is your question in the same meeting? So in other words, if we repeal this in two weeks, do we then have an order of notice to have a new?
You need, you need a draft of an ordinance to notice a public hearing, so the, the repeal draft is easy, that's a strike through. I would, what it sounds like you might be moving towards is repeal and also a resolution at the same meeting, direct, directing staff to come up with a different version, a report and a different version within a deadline set by you.
Um, while we're in discussion, would it be permissible for me to ask the chief to come up for a second?
Sure.
Not to put you on the spot, but- So, my question's fairly simple. You know, we've gone all this time without this particular ordinance in place, do you think that if we were to potentially repeal it in a couple of weeks or timeframe and come up with a better solution, would it be that, would that be something that you think that the, would affect the day-to-day job currently of the police department?
No, I think if we can do something, uh, you know, within the next probably month or two, I think we can survive with what we have to fall back on. The problem is, and I, I know that everyone has their opinion, but, uh, the problem is when we have to tie up the police department, three or four cars to go to the same complaint three or four times sometimes in one night, and someone else mentioned they should be doing something else. And, and it's true, we have domestic calls, we have B and Es, and when we keep repeatedly going to a house three, four times, maybe in a night, maybe in a couple of weeks, and then we attempt to get, to straighten that situation out- to get, to straighten that situation out, and as someone else mentioned, the landlord is living in Connecticut or New York, and they're really not interested. They're collecting the rent, but they're not interested in what's going on at their home. You think they would be, and you think, especially, there's a possibility of damage being done to their home. So, yeah, we can, we can get by, we can get by on what we have. But most of the time, and I, I told Rachel, it's 99 out of 100 times, we go there once, and they're pretty cooperative, and usually they'll break it up. Sometimes we go twice and they'll break it up. So, I can't, it's a case-by-case basis. You can't determine what's going to happen when we get the call. But one thing I can tell you is my officers always use discretion when they issue a summons, if they do. Many times, they don't. So, yes, we can get by with what we have to answer your question.
So, Chief, just to clarify then, you would be satisfied with a repeal as long as there was quick action for a different ordinance? And frankly, mid-May, your problem is about over until September.
Yes, I would.
Right.
I have no problem with that. We can, we can get by without that. And, and once again, our purpose isn't to ruin a party of, of people down in Mattoonik. I, I spent plenty of time in Mattoonik myself. So, that's, that's not our intention. Our intention is to give these people peace and quiet when they're trying to put their children to sleep or they have to get up for work in the next morning. In the house next door, they're partying until 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock, you know, 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, and then they spill out into the street, speeding up and down the road when they leave. That's the situation we're dealing with.
And Chief, two weeks ago, we heard, we, we heard people saying that they're, they're parking on their lawn, they're blocking their driveway.
They're parked on their lawn, yeah.
I mean, it's totally inappropriate behavior, so.
Yeah. So, and I'm, I went to college, too, you know? I, I mean, we all did. That, that's, and I don't want to give the, and I've said it before, I don't want to give these kids a, a record or a blemish. So, what we're looking at here is a violation, a fine. It's not, and it whole, it brings the landlords in on it. They can't just ignore what's going on. It makes them responsible, too. So, like I say, I don't want to inhibit the, some of people from having a good time. That, that's not our intent. And believe me, we have a lot of other things to do. We don't go unless we're called. That's, that's when we go to respond to these incidents. So, yes, we can, we can get by and see what, see what everyone comes up with.
Thank you. Mr. President, if I may, though, there's one thing that I caution the council about, and that is the framework at least here. We know past this constitutional muster. It's been tried in the courts. If we were to abandon this structure, we're not going to know that we've got a constitutionally valid program. This works because the courts say it works. If we were to scrap this in its entirety, we'd be in virgin territory and we couldn't make guarantees about whether or not it would be a valid way to enforce. Anything we do that discriminates against college kids or, you know, tries to say rental property is treated different than, than privately-owned residences, those things get pretty dicey pretty quick.
I also feel that we're not south, we're not, I'm sorry, narrow-gans it, and let's take into my business that I'm in with properties and real estate. I feel narrow-gans it becomes a very difficult place to do business in, in terms of properties or just having simply someone that doesn't want a rental property next door to them.
And again, that's fine. My only caution here is that we shouldn't, I don't want to leave the council with the impression that we can repeal and come up with a completely different scheme that is likely to work better. I don't know that there is a completely different scheme that is going to work at all.
Rob, I think you said if, if you came up with this same framework and made changes to it, it would.
I, I think that's right. I think there are things you can do around this ordinance that improve the ordinance. I just don't think that, I mean, the, the gravamen of this ordinance is this public nuisance concept, the defining of specific behaviors that constitute a public nuisance. That's got to be the core of, of the program. The idea of abandoning a number may be problematic because, again, you have to be specific enough so that a reasonable person knows what's, what's unlawful or improper. It's not unlawful in the criminal sense, but improper conduct under the ordinance. So, again, the framework here has been tested. We know it works. If we try to deviate from it too much, I'm concerned that, you know, you're, you're going to end up with an ordinance that doesn't have, truly doesn't have teeth and truly doesn't have a, a positive impact. I just don't want to leave the council with the impression that, you know, you can tell us to go do something better and it's going to be an easy lift. I don't know. This, this ordinance has been developed over time, has been tested by the courts, was reviewed by the town solicitor, was reviewed by the police department. This was not, you know, this was not just written on the back of an envelope. This was a carefully-considered ordinance. If we try to go back and do it better, there are certainly things that we can do around the edges that will change the ordinance and, and make it more palatable, but changing that core, I'm not sure is, is going to be possible.
Right. So, and again, we've heard from the chief that a short cap isn't detrimental to them as long as we keep that framework, and so.
I'll reconsider again.
Well, if I'm hearing the town manager correctly, he's advising that repeal is not the best option if we're seeking to amend the ordinance.
So, I'd still like to see the ordinance kept in place where, where we are right now, and next, next meeting have some amendments, perhaps, offered to us that we could make it better for everyone. I'm, I'm definitely open to that, but I, I think we, we should leave the, what we have in place and amend that.
So, Mr. President, the assistant town solicitor's got a suggestion that may work. We could publish an order of notice that makes one amendment to the existing ordinance, and that is to make the effective date two or three months down the road, and then to come back with further amendments as we can draft them. So that the, the ordinance does not take effect until May 1st, and then we'll scramble and come up with the best set of amendments we can.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second. A motion to have a order of notice at the next meeting for repeal of the ordinance. Do we want to vote on that now?
Yeah. You know, I think the last suggestion is a good one. So, I'm back to no on this one and, and put a start date on the, the ordinance that we currently have that gives us time to amend it.
All right. Thanks. Any other commentary? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
All right. So, that motion fails. Do I hear another motion, 11B?
So, I'll make a motion to, help me with the wording. Amy?
To advertise an order of notice amending the unruly gatherings ordinance by providing that the effective date shall be, I'm going to suggest June 1st.
And I'll make that motion as presented.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
All right. By a vote of three to two, that motion carries. And that brings us back to item six on the agenda, which is licenses. Six A is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the BR MS Crazy Coyote Chase 5K and One Mile Fun Run on Saturday, April 4th, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. to Broad Rock Middle School, PTO. This is of Broad Rock Road in Wakefield. Subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town and issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event in the amount specified by the finance director. Application by Christine Palmieri. Thank you for being so patient.
Hi, I'm Christine Palmieri. I am a member of the Broad Rock Middle School PTO, and I am asking that you please approve our permit to conduct the eighth annual Broad Rock Middle School Crazy Coyote Chase 5K and One Mile Fun Run on Saturday, April 4th. The 5K starts at 9:00 a.m. and the One Mile Fun Run starts at 10:00. It's a great community event, and all the money raised goes right to the kids at Broad Rock Middle School. This is the eighth year in a row, so we've got it working as a well-oiled machine now, so we just hope that you approve it.
I think you can count on it.
Make a motion to approve six A.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I think it's a great thing for the community. I think also other folks, you're going to be looking for fundraising, right?
Oh, yes.
So, just make sure you let people know that they can contact you guys for sponsorship.
Yes, we're always looking for sponsors and raffle items, and it's very well-attended, so.
Quick note, my, my wife hadn't, hadn't had time to be involved in PTO, and then one day went to volunteer and came home and told me she was the president of the PTO the first year that they did the Coyote Chase. So, it's been going very well for a long time.
All right. We had a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yay, thank you so much.
Congratulations and good luck.
If anyone is interested, you can go on BRMS Crazy Coyote Chase on Facebook for more information. Thank you so much.
Welcome. Six B is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct a portion of the Bike MS Ride the Road in South Kingstown on Saturday, June 13th, 2020, at 7:30 a.m. to the National Multiple Sclerosis Society of Waltham, Mass. Subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town and issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event in the amount specified by the finance director. Application by Emily Rivera. Is Emily here? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Maura Bushore. Emily is actually out of town, so I'm here in her place. I work out of Warwick for the MS Society, and this is the 33rd year that we are doing Ride the Road. It is the, one of our biggest fundraisers here in Rhode Island for the MS Society. We, we have a goal of raising about $400,000 with this ride. It's actually over two days. The first day is when we're riding through South Kingstown. We have about 350 cyclists that take to the road, and... Any other questions on the event?
How would somebody go about getting involved, participating?
Well, we, if somebody wants to ride, they can register. BikeMSRhodeIsland.org is our website, and we do have a $300 fundraising minimum. So, we do ask everybody that participates to hit that. Our average fundraiser raises just about $900.
Great.
Motion to approve six B.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right. That brings us to communications. Communication 7B is an email dated February 11th, 2020, from Sarah Delmonico of Ram Point Marina concerning the renewal of their lease with the town. Is Sarah here tonight by any chance? All right. We did discuss this briefly in the work session. Rob, you, you're continuing negotiations at this point?
Negotiations are ongoing. What I would suggest is, in order to make sure that the council is fully apprised of what's going on, we scheduled an executive session, but I will continue negotiations even before that executive session. Hopefully, we can, we can report at that meeting that we've resolved our, our still-sticking points. But if we can't, I can certainly update the council at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Make a motion to place 7B on file and schedule an executive session at our, the end of our next meeting in regards to this.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. 7E is an email dated February 12th, 2020, from Joanne Costanza concerning, expressing concerns with the recreation department program Nerf Battle Zone. Is anyone here to speak on this matter?
Good evening. Just briefly, in response to Ms. Costanza's email regarding the program, there may, may have been some misinterpretation of what our program actually was. She did share a YouTube video of a Nerf battle, which was not at all what the program involved. It was basically inviting youth and adults to an active program at the rec center, which involved Nerf equipment and was games such as Capture the Flag, Last Man Standing. It is using Nerf, Nerf toys, and it was quite well-attended. There were 20 folks that came, adults and children. It was a program that brought in kids who might not play basketball or flag football or those types of activities, and it was a great program. It was very social, very active.
All right. Do they have to bring their own Nerf guns or do you supply?
Most brought their own. We did have some.
Okay.
Toys that they could.
Did we provide, like, eye protection at all or?
Yes. Eyewear was mandatory.
Good. I mean, I think personally, as long as it involves eye protection, I think Nerf guns are great. I'm not a proponent of kids playing with guns, you know, in, in terms of, but I've, my kids have gone through, now, you know, what's the place in town? He was just here.
The Airsoft?
Extreme Airsoft. You know, they started there with doing Nerf guns, and it was always a good time, and they enjoyed it. And I think as long as it's safe and it's not anything other than, you know, positive games, I don't see anything wrong with it.
Right. Very popular. I certainly understand people have various opinions in terms of their views, and there's certainly, I mean, certainly, parents can make the decision as to whether or not their children should participate.
Has anybody responded to Ms. Costanza at this point to her letter?
There has been no response besides she did talk to staff initially, and staff explained what the program was, but that was prior to her, her email, so I'm certainly happy to respond.
I think I'll make a motion, place 7E on file, and refer it to the rec commission to respond.
Sure.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. 7F, emails dated February 17th, 2020, from Rachel Clow and Fran O'Brien, expressing concerns with the town's newly enacted unruly gatherings ordinance. Received, placed on file. What do we want to do with these ones? Perhaps it makes sense to forward, place it on file and forward them to the town manager as he's conducting his investigations.
And we'll make sure that they're aware of the proceedings as we go forward.
Second.
I didn't actually make a motion. I need somebody else to make the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. All right. 7G, an email dated February 18th, 2020, from Hillary Carlson, president of South Kingstown Library Board of Trustees, seeking the council's support of their request to the Rhode Island Department of Transportation to expedite the planned improvement of the pedestrian crossing system at Route 138 and Upper College Road near the Kingston Free Library.
Yes, good evening. I'm Hillary Carlson from the Board of Trustees, and we are increasingly concerned about the Kingston Hill Library and the foot traffic going from, you know, one side of 138 to the other and traffic coming from Upper College Road. So, no matter when the university does what they're going to do and, and possibly eliminate some of our parking places, there still is the issue of crossing 138. some of our parking spaces, there still is the issue of crossing 138. And we understand that the Department of Transportation has plans in their tenure plan to make improvements, but we are formulating a letter that we would like to send out encouraging them to please expedite whatever they're going to do because it is, it's very unsafe. And the programs that the library offers are geared towards children, the elderly, all ages, and it's, it can be a nightmare crossing. So we would urge the council to please support our letter, either endorse it singly or as a body, but give us that support. Thank you.
You wanted to speak to it?
My name is Timothy Murphy. I'm also a member of the Board of Trustees, and I just wanted to second what Hillary said and just a little bit more of information. So we started talking about this because we learned that URI is planning to revamp Upper College Road, and there's going to be a loss of parking spaces, which will probably push many more library patrons to have to cross, park across the street in the church parking lot and cross Route 138, which I did this morning, and it's crazy. It's really, not only is there no signal and not only is there no way to stop traffic in all directions, but if you're coming from the church, you can't even see whether light is red or green because there's like a cone to protect from glare, I guess. So you don't, you don't know what to do. And we have a lot of kids coming with story hours and so forth, it makes it very dangerous. So I called the DOT to try to find out what the status is of their improvements, and I was told that they are negotiating with National Grid to use a pole across the street on the church side to put a walk, don't walk sign there, which would be great. That's what we need there. But it's still uncertain whether it will happen this year. So we're really trying to get as many stakeholders to support an effort to push this forward, including the council, including the state reps and senators, including a lot of community groups. And I think the more that we can get on the letter that you have in your file and send to the DOT, the more likely that this might happen quickly. So we ask you to help us on that. Thank you.
Mr. President, just for the council's awareness, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee at their meeting this past week also expressed support for this letter going forward.
I'll make a motion to provide support from the council in whichever way the board feels necessary that will have the most significant impact to hopefully getting more attention to this matter and getting it rectified.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. That motion carries. And that brings us to 7I, an email dated February...
H.
Oh, H, that's right. Email dated February 18th, 2020, from Raissa Mosher, expressing concerns and providing information on the school facilities project. We've received that. Thank you for being patient.
Thank you, guys, for enduring a long night and allowing me to come up and speak about the email that I sent to you. You have a lot on your plate, and I know this is a big piece of what you're working on right now, but sitting through all the other stuff that you're grappling with, I appreciate you guys and everything that you do. I know being an elected official is not easy and that there are always people on differing sides of an issue, so I appreciate your willingness to listen. So I did send an email, and I know the document was long. I hope you've had a chance to read it. I wanted to speak to you tonight because, as you all know, I have had a tremendous amount of experience with the school facilities project, both as a member of the school committee for eight years and also as a former school committee building chair. I have continued to pay close attention to the process as a community member since then. I have watched the plan undergo countless iterations, and as I said in my email, I am very concerned about the recent change in the plan that has the Stage Two application with our high school being relocated to the Curtis Corner Middle School with an addition. As I said, I hope you've had a chance to read the document that I sent. It contains a historical timeline as well as multiple links with data and with audio and video related to the project. I have copies of it for anybody in the audience if you're interested. As we move forward with the Stage Two facilities application, it is important to review how the community arrived here. I'm not going to read the whole thing that I sent you, but I just want to give a little bit of background here. While many are busily constructing a revisionist history of the past nine months, a look back at the documented evidence reveals a different story. Last May, the school committee asked the school building committee to move forward with a study of the feasibility of building a high school at the Curtis Corner Middle School location. Members of the school committee telegraphed their obvious skepticism prior to a 4-3 vote, and the school building committee returned their analysis that the idea was fully vetted and not feasible. Just six months later, at the request of a new superintendent, who was not involved in any of the facilities planning that took place over the past three years, the same school committee asked the same school building committee to investigate a very similar question. The same school building committee, working with the same architects, with the addition of an owner's project manager who works at the direction of the school committee, this time responded in the affirmative stating that the project is now feasible at the Curtis Corner site. Can the community trust this judgment when the only real difference was the school committee's new desire to move in this direction? The current plan, called feasible by those with a direct financial interest, has been vetted in the past and found to be far too expensive. It only appears affordable now because it is significantly scaled back from the original proposal, and obstacles that were prior deal breakers are suddenly being dismissed or outright ignored. For instance, what were previously called wetlands are now referred to as water features. I'm not making this up. The ledge that has been talked about as a major problem with the site over and again might suddenly be good ledge. Appreciate that Rob acknowledged, probably not. The facilities plan has gone through so many iterations, it is easy to miss the most important feature. The cost of the project will remain the same, while the scope will be flexible. The architects and town manager perhaps see this as a feature, but it is a bug. It means that all future mistakes in planning and cost overruns will result in less of our buildings being even partially renovated. Between the initial plan and the current iteration, planned renovations at the existing CCMS building have already been scaled back from $280 per square foot to $125 per square foot in order to stay within budget. The history of this school committee's handling of this process has been marked with mistakes and delays, already costing us $9 million worth of repairs, according to the town manager's CIP plan document. The change of opinion by the building committee and the school committee with respect to the Curtis Corner property is risky. If mistaken, the victims will not only be the town's taxpayers, but also our children, who will continue to learn in substandard spaces. We need to make sure we get this right for the sake of our children. For that reason, I hope community members and you, town council, will join me in continuing to question the glaring inconsistencies in this plan. My hope is that we can have a completely honest conversation about what will really be happening with this new plan versus now what is being sold to the, an understandably excited contingency of parents with young children who somehow believe that we're getting a shiny, brand-new high school. I just want the community and the parents to know the truth. I attended the most recent meeting at the Columbia Street High School, which was scheduled for the community to weigh in on the possibilities for that location, when it's, if and when it's vacated. The large crowd in the room had many questions about the project. Personally, I feel like that type of meeting should have taken place before giving RGB the directive to proceed with the Stage Two application at CCMS. People there wanted to know what was planned at Columbia Street before the most recent pivot. Somehow, prior plans for Columbia Street have been left out of the conversation. People also wondered about the VOTAC program. The superintendent spoke about CCMS site being markedly better for today's educational program, even without any changes to the existing building, save an addition for things like a new gym and auditorium and maybe a coat of paint in the old part of the building. She showed an overhead of the Columbia Street classrooms and hallways and referred to cells and bells. She also showed an overhead view of CCMS, but this overhead left out the classrooms and the hallways, which are the same cells and bells that exist at Columbia Street. There absolutely was a plan to address not only the square footage at Columbia, but to make multiple 21st century learning spaces, as well as to raise the Ottawa and Woodshop, bring those programs into the main building in a VOTAC wing on the first floor, which would also house biomedical, CNA, allied health, and other offerings that were in the works. Further, the plan at CCMS does not address how students without their own transportation would get to internships from that site. The Columbia Street location has the advantage of being located within walking distance of so many local businesses, as well as South County Hospital. Are we thinking of our most equitable opportunities with this new plan? I will leave you with this. There are so many what-ifs with the CCMS site that do not exist on Columbia. It doesn't mean that there's not going to be things that we run into on Columbia Street. That's why you have a contingency, but there are so many what-ifs at CCMS that exist, that do not exist on Columbia Street. Is the existing CCMS building with an addition what this community wants to spend $62 million on? Are we going to keep going back at this community for more money to upgrade that building because we can't do it with what we've got? There was a plan, it was solid, and it changed because of a question asked by a new superintendent who had been here for six weeks. It is the largest project SK has ever undertaken, with the potential to irrevocably change the landscape, personality, and taxes of our town. I want the community to be fully aware of the entire story. Thank you.
Yep. So do I hear a motion on 7H?
I'll make a motion to place Communication 7H on file and acknowledge some of the facts in the presentation that has been just given to us and the link that is in the communication. There are concerns with... I'll wait for a second.
I'd just like to add to that...
You need a second first.
Yeah, do you want a second?
I'd like to second with further comments, I guess. I'd like to extend what he's already said to include directing this communication to the school building committee and having them factor this into their consideration as they move forward with the plans that they're considering currently.
All right. I think that needs to be an amendment. Friendly amendment?
I'll accept the amendment, sure.
Okay. All right. Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Did you want to say?
No, I'm done.
7I is an email dated February 20th, 2020, from David Palazzetti on behalf of the Recreation Commission, expressing their concerns with the impact the proposed school facilities projects may have on town recreational facilities. It's been received and placed on file. I see that Mr. Palazzetti is in the audience.
Thank you for the opportunity. I won't go through the whole email. I think that kind of summed it up if you've read it, but the overall, I'm at risk of starting to recite lines from the Lorax after the last couple of meetings we've had, so I apologize. But, you know, as I think you saw with the town farm, park issue, when you guys were able to give us a little time to work with the hospital and work with the town staff, I think we came up with a better plan than was originally presented, especially when, before we knew the grant restrictions were there. So I think it was a much better plan. Is it a perfect plan? No, it's not, but it's a much better plan. In terms of the CCMS Playfield High School relocation, the park department wasn't even really brought into the equation, and Parks and Recreation Commission was absolutely not brought into the equation until after the vote was taken to forward the Stage Two application. And the school is being built, well, part of the facilities that support that school are being built on town parkland, not town school land. And I know it's all town property, but there is a difference. And if I went to build my dream house on my neighbor's property, that could be an issue. So I just want to kind of ask, and what this motion asks for from our meeting was that we get brought in and have a meeting with the staff, with the building committee and the Recreation Commission, so that we can come up with a better plan. We're not trying to stop it, just like we weren't trying to stop the hospital, but the plan that exists right now, and I just want to correct the manager, it's not hole four of the golf course, it's four holes of the golf course. It's a road through the middle of the golf course. It is a parking lot, a complete parking lot on what is now an actual field. It's a nice, flat field that is used, and they're going to pave it. And there's no plans in the budget that I'm aware of, that the, if that's the right number, $62 million, there's no plans in that $62 million estimate to replace that field, to replace that disc golf course, to replace the other areas that are affected by the school project. So I think the school building committee needs to consider that, and actually, it needs to be part of their project and part of that budget estimate, so that it doesn't fall back on the town to replace that in the future. My understanding is that that park, the Curtis Corner Playfields were bonded to be built, and the people that voted for those bonds expected those fields to be built, and now to spend other bond money to build on top of, a parking lot on top of a field, it just doesn't really mesh with what the intent was. So just asking you to please include the Recreation Commission and Parks and Recs Department in these discussions with the schools, so we can get the right building built there, if indeed it's fiscally responsible to do it in the first place.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question for Dave. Dave, has the Recreation Commission come to a consensus on this issue? Do you have something you'd like to present to the building committee, a position?
No, not yet. We haven't, the only reason we found out about this is the plans, well, I knew about it because I was kind of paying attention, but it was officially brought to the Recreation Commission on our agenda of our meeting about a week ago. So we haven't had any kind of discussion or input from the town or the school building committee on what they actually need for parking, where the tennis courts, why they selected that area for parking, why the tennis courts are being relocated to the area they were. When we talked to the superintendent, the Parks superintendent, who is very familiar with that site, he thought it was a really bad spot for the tennis court and obviously the same concerns we had about the parking areas. So, you know, the engineer in me says, I need some, I need a program. I need to know what the, what the parking needs are, what the field needs are, and how we can best mesh them, along with the topography and the wetlands that exist on that site. And there is ledge on the site, as we all know about, so it's got to be part of a concept, entire plan. It can't just be, wow, this aerial photograph looks good, let's put a field here.
Right, so I think what I'd like to see is Recreation Commission take up the question. That would be my position, and give, you should be advising us on what the Recreation Commission's needs are or wants are, or whatever, in that area. I think that you should take that up. And we, as the building committee, should hear what you have to say.
We'd be happy to, and again, if there is a, you know, some information the building committee, the consultants can present in terms of what exactly they need for parking area, what is required of that road that has to come in. I understand they need a second access. Does it have to be in that location? Could it be somewhere else?
A lot of that's still in the development phase, so I think you could have input into the development if you, you know, proactively, as the Recreation Commission came to the building committee and said, here's what we're thinking.
Right.
Because a lot of it has not been solidified yet, so this would be the time.
Right, and that's why I wanted to get in front of you now, because, you know, as these things move along, as we saw tonight with a couple of ordinances, things move quickly sometimes and we don't get the input. That's really all we're asking for right now, is to, is to be part of the discussion.
The chair of the building committee is here to my left here.
What I was going to recommend is that we formally invite input on the agenda, our next agenda, an item to discuss concerns and issues with the Recreation Commission. I think it'll be good because at that table you'll have Peregrine, we'll also have RGB, who are the architects, and the 13 members of the school building committee as well. And I'd have no problem putting that on the agenda at a time that works for you. If this next meeting doesn't work, I hope it does, but if it doesn't, we'll try to get you on the next one. you on the next one.
Maybe we should wait until the Recreation Committee has a chance to meet, and then put them on the building committee post that, right? So that he has some consensus behind him.
Yeah, and I'm going to put it back on Terry Murphy to, you know, work with, you know, her Parks Director, to come up with some ideas how to replace, if the plan is as it is today, how we could replace those lost facilities.
Definitely should be in the loop.
Thank you.
When is your next meeting?
We meet on the third Monday, so we just had a meeting, so it'd be four weeks. But I think all of us are very, you know, interested in this, and we've, just like we did with the hospital and Town Farm Park, we had a special meeting, so we could, you know, I think we could do one in two weeks, if, you know, it's up to what the Parks Department can do in terms of getting us the information that we would need from them.
Sounds good.
So, Mr. President, I'd suggest on file and referral to the school building committee, we'll make sure J C gets a copy.
Do I hear that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion?
Yeah, and I would say to, time is of the essence here. Things can happen quickly on that school building committee, so somehow, if you can have a special meeting, again, I hate to do that to you guys again, but if you can have a special meeting and accelerate when you have a consensus, that would be helpful, I think.
So I'll commit to working with the secretary for this school building committee to get a invitation out as soon as possible.
Right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. You very much.
Thank you. Item eight is comments from interested citizens. There's anybody who would like to?
Sorry, I meant to say this earlier. I think your idea of having two readings of an ordinance is a really good idea, because then it does help for when you start talking about things, and then it starts to buzz all over town and on social media. As a school committee, we had a policy for two readings on a policy change or a new policy, and it just gives people the opportunity to digest it a little bit. So I think that was a really good suggestion.
As all you know, I'm Maureen Egan, I'm the chair of the Housing Committee, and as I'm sitting here listening about the school, the Curtis Corner School, I think the Housing Authority has a vested interest in speaking to somebody about the program. I haven't seen any designs or anything, but our exit from our property goes right across the street to the Curtis Corner School. So I don't know if there's a possibility that I could talk to somebody about what, at least, the draft plans are to make sure that it's a safe intersection for everybody, for the people leaving the property, and kids coming around and everything. It just, it was a thought just came to my head this late hour at night, and I'd appreciate speaking to somebody about it, so we can make sure everybody's on the same wavelength.
Maureen, that'd be perfectly fine. You can reach out to me directly, and we can get you on the agenda, or answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any comments from council members up here?
All right, very good.
On to item nine, Board's Commissions and Committees Report. I believe we lost our consideration.
David Flanders couldn't stay this late. He was preempted.
It's, yeah.
We'll get him back on the schedule.
Can we put him to the next meeting, or do we have someone on there already?
I think we have someone scheduled for the next meeting. He'll be two meetings out, if I'm not mistaken. Well, here we go. Economic Development is on March 9th. I'll invite David to come back on the 23rd of March.
Thank you.
And if that doesn't work, we have an opening on the 27th of April, which actually is not a good night for us to do it, because it's final budget adoption.
We'll lose him again.
That brings us to the Town Manager's Report.
Quickly, hospital land swap is still ongoing. We did receive a complaint this week about the fence that the hospital has installed between its property and ours having fallen down. We've reached out to the hospital to let them know that they really need to make sure that they are not letting the property deteriorate. The fence has been removed from the town property by the town, by town employees, and put back on the hospital portion of the property. And again, the letter went off, letting them know that they really need to keep better care of the property. We should have an application ready to go to D E M. Terry, next week, you think?
Yes.
I think so, too. I think we'll be off next week. We're summarizing all of the public comments that were made to the proposal, and getting all of those in a form that we think D E M and the National Park Service will appreciate. I will note that we have had no further offerors. I know there's been a lot of talk about the availability of other alternative properties, better perhaps than the one up at Glen Rock. We've had no one come forward with an offer, and we have not identified a property that would be more suited to a park use. So while we're still open, if anybody's got a property out there, we're happy to talk to them. We have not had anyone come forward with a better property. As was mentioned by Ms. Mosher, we did have a event at the high school this past Saturday to talk about the possible reuse of the Columbia Street property. That event was designed to be two things. It was designed to be a 45-minute, 55-minute panel discussion, just sort of describing the project, and an hour-long sort of charrette exercise to talk about uses, possible uses of the high school should it be abandoned, the high school at Columbia Street. The second portion of the project, or the program, was jettisoned, because there were clearly more questions to be answered than could be dealt with in 55 minutes. I do think that there is a real need for more forums in the community. I understand that the school committee is constrained by the Open Meetings Act in a way that most public bodies are not. They cannot address items that are not on their agenda. They can't add items to their agenda for discussion purposes. So the way that this plays out is that the school committee, when someone comes to the podium or to the microphone to ask a question, does not engage in a give-and-take question-and-answer format. I've spoken to the superintendent about whether we can design a program that is intended to be a Q and A, so that you could have an agenda that is broad enough to allow for that sort of exchange. She's talking to legal counsel about it. But in the absence of that information coming through, a give-and-take with the school committee, we, as a community, need to figure out how we're going to have that exchange. There was a whole lot of pent-up confusion and concern, and a lot of questions on Saturday. I think we answered many of them, but by no stretch of the imagination did we exhaust the questions that I'm sure aren't there. We're going to need to figure out how to make sure the public are informed, and not just informed in a "we publish to the public" kind of way. There's a need for exchange that was clear in that meeting. The South Road school lease issue, we had the Boys and Girls Club in here a couple of meetings ago, and one of the questions that we've been tasked with finding an answer to is how much would it cost to operate that building or maintain that building if it was completely vacant? The costs of the building without any facilities, maintenance, personnel associated with, without a janitor, is about $50,000 to $60,000. With a janitor, the building is about $80,000 a year to operate. Mark Rousseau is looking into what would we do if we were to completely mothball it? If we drain the pipes and turn the heat off, what's the total cost of operating the building with absolutely no energy into it? I'm still waiting for that analysis, but it's going to be something north of zero, but nowhere near $50,000 either. The other thing on the South Road lease is we have got some indication that the Meadowbrook School is not going to be vacating quite as early as we thought. It may not be until August, or perhaps, I don't want to, you know, speculate, but their move-in date to the new facility is moving toward the end of the summer. And I, it's got a tendency there. I don't want to, I don't want to jinx them and say it could be September, but it isn't clear they're going to be out in June or July or August. I do want to alert the council to the fact that there is some litigation in town around the project over on Gravely Hill, the solar project by Kersage. Kersage has been sued, or I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. The dear office, the owners of the property that Kersage has an arrangement with, has been sued by Inabutter. That lawsuit is, I believe, to be heard tomorrow for a temporary restraining order, a stopping of the work going on up there. And there is a pro se case that has been filed against the town. We've not been served, and we should have been served a long, long, long time ago, back in September. So the status of that litigation is, at this point, up in the air. We received a copy of that pro se litigation from another interested party this evening, so we'll find out more about it as we go. But there is litigation around that rezoning up on the Gravely Hill area.
And that will be on the agenda for the next meeting, to be discussed in executive session.
Thank you. As I mentioned in the work session, we are going to go out to market with $4 million worth of bonds to pay for school construction that has been completed. This is everything from the HVAC systems and roof repairs to security upgrades at the elementary, middle, and high schools. We expect to be coming back to the council for a bond sale sometime in March or April. And that, I think, is going to be the highlights, and we're going to keep it that short. That's the manager's report.
We already did the solicitor's report, so that cuts down on some time. One more time. And that brings us to item 12, Appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Christopher Little to the Housing Authority.
Second.
Just a comment that there were many, many good applicants for this, seven applicants, four of whom we interviewed tonight. Real good applicants, it wasn't an easy decision.
I agree. So we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other? I'll just leave it. 13, New Business. 13B is a resolution authorizing the town council president to sign the 2020 Initial Boundary Validation Program Form to verify the accuracy of the town boundary data to the U.S. Census Bureau, further described in a memo from the G I S Administrator to the town manager.
I'll make a motion to approve item 13B.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item 13E is a resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise for order of notice of public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the Town Code, Chapter 17, Taxation for Veterans Exemptions. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Item 12, 13E.
Second, sorry.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. 13F is a resolution authorizing the approval of a resolution as prepared by bond council authorizing the issuance of bonds and/or notes in an amount not to exceed $4 million to finance capital improvements at various schools, as approved by the electorate on November 4th, 2014, and the advancement of funds from the town treasury and the subsequent reimbursement from bond proceeds, as shown on Exhibit 1 attached to the agenda, further described in a memo from the Finance Director to the Town Manager dated February 20th.
Mr. President, this was a belts and suspenders approach. Our belt is holding. We don't need the suspenders at this point. This item can be tabled.
Motion to table item 13F.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And 13G is a resolution amending the authorization granted on December 9th, 2019, to the town manager to enter into an agreement for insurance recovery for environmental liabilities to Einstein Malinchuk of Washington, D.C., subject to review and approval by the town solicitor of the contract form and a fee cap of 40%. Further described in a memo from the procurement administrator to the town manager dated February 20th.
Mr. President, this is a contract that the council previously approved. It's a contingency fee agreement with a firm, it's actually a couple of firms, that go out and look for insurance policies that might cover, might cover pollution events that occurred in the past. Rose Hill Landfill is one of them. The original contract was from the scientists. This is actually the contract that they prefer to use. It's from the lawyer partners of this group of four. This would give us attorney-client privilege, as opposed to the contract with the scientists, which we don't get any attorney-client privilege with. I will say they've been in our records already. They were in the building today, and they have found evidence of coverage, so this would allow us to continue, and would allow them to pursue those policies to payment.
Motion to approve 13G.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. 13H is a resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise for order of notice of public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the Town Code, Chapter 17, Taxation, Article 3, Property Tax Exemptions for Elderly Persons.
I'll make a motion to approve 13H. Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. That brings us?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. The time is 10:30.